Evening, folks. The hour of 7:30 has arrived. I'd like to call to order this study session of District 116 for November 5th, 2019. Someone prepared to do roll call? Our Secretary and Secretary for Tim are not here, so...
I'm happy to do roll call.
Go ahead.
Sure. Let's see. Board Member Patton here. Board Member Exum here. Board Member Pulaski.
Here.
Vice President Ann Hall.
Here.
And President John Dimmitt.
Here. We do have a quorum present this evening. And so, we do have an addition and a modification to this evening's agenda. And so, immediately after approval of the agenda, we'll have commendations and recognitions. Are there any other corrections, modifications, additions to this evening's agenda? Hearing none. We'll move forward with citizen's statements. And Mayor Marlin, you are first, Diane, so please come forward and state your name for the purposes of the tape and go from there.
Good evening. My name is Diane Marlin. And tonight, I speak to you as Mayor of Urbana. But in a previous life, I can say that I'm proud to be a longtime community member, volunteer in District 116, a former PTA president at Leo School and Urbana High School, a former band booster president, and the proud parent of two children who were educated in Urbana Public Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. So, thank you all for whatever role you had in that. So, tonight, you're considering a proposal to fund two full-time school resource officers, one dedicated to Urbana Middle School and one to Urbana High School. I strongly support this plan. It was developed by Superintendent Ivory Tatum and her staff in collaboration with Urbana Police Chief Bryant Seraphin, Deputy Chief Richard Searls, and their team at the Urbana Police Department. As you know, for the past 26 years, the City of Urbana has funded a part-time officer to work as a school resource officer unless duties elsewhere in the city called him or her away. This was an ad hoc, part-time approach, and it may have been adequate in the 90s, but it's no longer adequate or appropriate for today's challenges. Our community has changed over the past few decades. All the serious challenges facing us in the homes and on the streets of Urbana find their way through the doors of the school. And you know that better than anyone. Public safety is the top priority for the City of Urbana, and that includes safety in and around our schools. And that makes it a top priority for District 116. Following the incidents at the schools last year, leadership in the city government and the school district were inundated with calls and visits from faculty, parents, staff, and community members, asking us for help to restore calm to the schools and keeping students and staff safe going forward. I believe that well-trained, involved, full-time school resource officers are essential components of the effort to help maintain a safe educational environment. You've met the school resource officers who are serving today. Michelle Robinson and Darren McCartney are in the schools now. They're well-suited to this role. They undergo training specifically for this job, and they will be integrated and have been into the school educational team. I have great confidence in their ability to enhance the overall quality of our school system. The SROs work in a preventive and collaborative framework. They complement what your staff does. They don't replace your staff, and they take their cues from building administrators. I urge you to support this proposal, and we look forward to working closely with the superintendent and the entire district to rebuild the vibrant, healthy, award-winning schools for which Urbana has long been known. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eldress Melinda Carr.
Good evening. To members of the Urbana School District 116 Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Jennifer Ivory Tatum, we have come tonight on behalf of the Ministry Alliance of Championing Urbana and Vicinity to express our concerns as you and the City of Urbana, Urbana Police Department, review the proposal for developing a full-time school resource officer for the Urbana High School and Urbana Middle School. We would like to bring to your attention our concerns about the reference to the role of an informal counselor on Page 2, Paragraph 6 of the document entitled, quote, "Development of a Full-Time School Resource Officer for the Urbana High School and the Urbana Middle School," unquote. The statement also was read at the meeting on October 7th, 2019, to Mayor Diane Marlin and members of the Urbana City Council. The statement followed the presentation by Superintendent Dr. Jennifer Ivory Tatum and representatives of the participating Urbana Schools and the Urbana Police Department. The paragraph in the proposal document states, quote, "The final role is that of an informal counselor. This role is important to provide information to students, parents, staff, and administrators on a variety of topics. This also provides students a safe way to discuss issues occurring in both the school and the community," unquote. Our concern with this paragraph is related to protecting the rights of parents and their students who come in contact with a school resource officer, SRO, in parents, who is first and foremost a police officer charged with carrying out law enforcement. Here are some of the questions and concerns we have about the program. One, does the SRO have full access to any student at any time? Two, when a student talks to an SRO voluntarily, do they need to have permission from the parent? Three, what will the participation look like? Will a student be asked to participate in informal counseling, a consultation, police interviews, voluntary contact, and other general contact with the police without a parent, legal guardian, our attorney, or other legal representative being present? Four, if a parent does not want their child or children to talk informally with an SRO, will they be able to opt out of the program? We understand that sometimes there is an immediate need to have law enforcement involved during violent incidents which occur on school grounds. At the same time, we also want to make sure we address community concerns of students being treated fairly when incidents do occur, and to our best, to do our best, to prevent the school-to-prison pipeline. Respectfully submitted, Reverend Charles L. Nash, President, Reverend Jacqueline Davis Minor, Chair of the Education Committee, who was sitting in the audience, and other members of the Education Committee, which are myself, Eldress Melinda Carr, and Evangelist Louise Van Dijk. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can provide you a copy of this.
I was just gonna say, can you leave that with Ms. Johnson?
The President is out of town. I have an email with him okaying this.
Okay.
And Reverend Jackie, as the Chair, has signed it, so I can leave you a copy and we can follow up with you on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alicia Trice. Triceis, I am so sorry.
You got it. It's okay. Okay. My name is Alicia Triceis, and I am one of the school social workers at Urbana High School. And this is my 19th year in the district, serving Urbana, and I'm very proud of that. This is my 10th year as a school social worker at Urbana High School. My previous assignments, I started out at Prairie School, and then I spent a wonderful time at Washington Early Childhood before they moved to the new building. Not that I'm jealous or bitter, but it's a beautiful new facility that we came up with for the early childhood, so... And I've just really been blessed to have been placed at Urbana High School. So, I'm here tonight to talk to you about my thoughts from the inside on the proposal for adding more SRO time at Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School. Let me just start by saying that the student resource officers in the 10 years I've been at Urbana High School have been great to work with. I've worked with four gentlemen, and they have been professional, responsive to me as a social worker when I have reached out to them, and a true resource for me and for our families and for some of our students. But again, they're police officers. And I realize that in the proposal, there's a push towards integrating the resource officers into more of the, like the Reverend said, more informal counseling-type position, growing those relationships. But we have a lot of work to do to develop that trust with police officers, as wonderful as our police officers are. I think that is, that's gonna be, that would be a challenge for, that, it just would be. And my question, as I was thinking about coming to talk to you before that, is do we need more policing in our schools? Yes, we went through a crisis last year and a few years building up to that. I'm afraid that I, this is my thoughts, my feelings as a professional mental health provider in the building, is that that's gonna, that's not the message, the answer to the issues that are facing us. I think what we have is great. If we can integrate them more into our school community, that's great. That's a great vision as well. But if you have some money to spend on increasing the social and emotional welfare, physical and emotional safety of the students in our district, I would strongly encourage you to cast a wider net in looking at hiring more mental health professionals. I'm gonna put my UEA hat on, because for the last year and a half, I've also served as the Vice President for our Teachers Union. And in my district leadership capacity, getting more back in talking to our grade school staff at all the levels, I have seen and heard a cry for more mental health support, more social and emotional support for our most vulnerable, youngest students in our district. I'm not gonna speak for UMS, but I have deep respect for the model that they've put together. I think you're gonna talk more about social-emotional resources in the district. I saw on the agenda, and I've taken a glance at Dr. Tatum's notes. And at the middle school, if you'll notice, it's very well-balanced on their team. They have three full-time school social workers. They have three full-time clinical professionals. They have a well-balanced team of restorative practices practitioner at each level, and SEA support, as well as admin support, et cetera. It's very balanced. I think they're moving in the right direction. We don't have very much balance at our grade schools. We just don't. There is one full-time school social worker in each building, and I can tell you from anecdotal conversations I've had with each one of them, they are exhausted. We have great staff, but there's much, a better bang for your buck from my perspective would be to take a look at adding more mental health, professional-level mental health support at our grade schools. And then I'm gonna be selfish and ask you to take a look at UHS. We have, three very short years ago, I was the only school social worker at UHS. We had one social worker for around 1,100 students. We did not have clinical professionals. That wasn't even a thing yet. We had three deans. We didn't have SEAs. And quite frankly, when my new partner of three years, my social work partner, is absent for a day, I don't remember how I got it all done. In fact, I remember leaving many times feeling like it was not enough. We are on the right track. We have one full-time clinical professional and a half-time clinical professional at UHS right now, and they are both fantastic. We have two full-time social workers. We have a complement of four SIs and four SEAs, and we are coming together as a team, and good things are changing and happening, but it is not enough. And I'm just here to strongly advocate for taking a look at adding more mental health support at these two levels, and also keeping an eye on the middle school to make sure they're getting what they need. Because I believe if we can address the changing needs of our students with their mental health, with their social-emotional growth, that we are gonna see those positive changes grow up with them again. And just another little anecdote from my job today and yesterday, as I was thinking forward towards whether I was gonna come and speak tonight. I want you to think about this. We are community mental health. Whether you like it or not, in our schools, we are community mental health. We are the one reliable source of support that many of our students and families have. I spent an hour yesterday and more time again today trying to advocate on behalf of two of my students, both who have, one of them who had been hospitalized at one time in their life for mental health crisis, and another who was desperately trying to get resources for her family to avoid such a crisis. And I was told by our SAS response provider, who had helped one of the students, but they had aged, they had just been dismissed from their 90 days of follow-up service, that in order to get back on the list, their waiting list was now closed for additional regular access to a mental health counselor. And that she didn't know when that waiting list would be open again, but when it was, my client could probably, if it wasn't a SAS crisis, expect to wait 60 days for an opening. And then she gave me a list of community resources that, you know, I've been around for a while, so I was also well aware of. And as I went through that list, I could not find a resource that did not, that had an opening to help these two students. So therefore, I want you to think about it. You know, myself and our clinical professionals, we are their community mental health. We are their intervention. And it's not therapy. It doesn't replace that. But we're sometimes all they have, and we're, we need more. So I just, that's all I'm gonna say. I know I've gone past my time a little bit, but that's what I wanted to leave you with. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? While you're thinking that through, I wanted to thank Erin Lebonsky and Austin for running the cameras for us tonight, so that the folks at home can watch. Anyone else wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Let the record show that Board Member, I'm drawing a blank. Brenda has shown up. Board Member Carter, thank you, and is now present. We will have an exec session after this evening's meeting for the purpose of discussing real estate and property. I don't believe there's any other topics other than that. All right. Next, we'll move forward to a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second at all. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Now we have commendations and recognitions. I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer.
So typically, we don't have commendations and recognitions during our study session, but as, we will be celebrating Veterans Day on Monday, and our next meeting, our next business meeting will be after the fact. We wanted to recognize our veterans. Mr. Williams did send out a survey, a staff survey, and we invited several of our veterans to be here tonight. And we do have one who has attended, so we'll have her stand up and recognize her for her service. Christine Smith is a TA at Thomas Paine, and she served for 10 years in the branch of US Navy. So, thank you, Christine, for coming, and thank you for your service.[1164.83][1164.83](APPLAUSE). Other staff members who responded to the survey, Elizabeth Chen of King Elementary, US Army, Dolores Lloyd, Principal at Thomas Paine, Illinois Army National Guard, Stephen Ryder of Leo, US Marine Corps, Michael Scott McBride of Urbana High School, US Army, Daniel Lance, Urbana High School, US Navy, Priscilla Kraut, UMS, US Navy, Jerry Moreland, Urbana High School, United States Armed Forces, Nathan Watson, Urbana High School, US Navy, and Patrick Russell, Urbana Middle School, US Army. So, we want to thank all of our USD veterans who've responded thus far, and I know I would be remiss if I did not say Diane Jackson, US Army, is that correct, I believe? No? Air Force? Yes, I cannot remember, but we're gonna say her name out loud anywhere, I'll get in a lot of trouble, because she works here at Central Office. So, we want to recognize all of our veterans and invite you all that are watching and listening and hear. There will be several recognitions and celebrations across the district on Monday. We have assemblies, I don't wanna name them all, because I will forget, but if you're associated with a campus, please check the website. Cameron will have all those available, and we invite you to join. There'll be speakers, special programs. So, we appreciate our veterans and mean so much to us, so thank you again. Au revoir.[1257.47][1257.47](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for your service. Next, we'll move into administrative reports. And the first of those is a 2019 Illinois School Report Card. Kim, we're turning it directly over to you. All right.
So, Kim and I are tag-teaming tonight?
Tag-teaming, okay.
So...
Turn the mic on.
So, I am going to do a little walkthrough around the report card first, and then Kim is going to share the PowerPoint presentation. Board members have it at their seats, and everyone else, there is a copy in the back. So, as you may know, we, the report card went live last week, so we've shared this information via Skylert with USD 116 staff as well. But I did just wanna walk around a little bit and do a little show and tell for the board and anyone in the audience that might be listening. So, the website is IRC-ISB.net. Anyone who wants to get in, if you just put Illinois Report Card, it'll take you right to us. So, this is our district snapshot page. It just tells you how many schools we have. Kim's gonna talk in more depth about things like the summative designations. But as you can see, we had four commendable schools, four underperforming schools. She's gonna talk to you a little bit about graduation rate. Our mobility, that is the number of students who basically transfer in and out of the district. You know, they might be with us for some time, and then they leave and go to another school, or they come back. This main page also shows a little bit of our growth compared to the state for our standardized assessment, state assessment that used to be called PARC, now it is IAR. We'll talk a little bit more about our per pupil expenditures, which is a new part of the report card, the evidence-based funding piece, chronic absenteeism, which is significant. That's why we're really thankful to have our student engagement advocates who work with that piece for us. And then the teacher retention percentage. So, going back up, there are several tabs on the left. If you're interested and want to walk around and see some of our academic progress, oh, are you serious? There we go. So, we are that lighter green. The state is that darker hunter green color. And again, because we have IAR data, which is fairly new, we have those percentages up, but we won't be able to show growth, but I'll go to that tab in a few minutes. The report card collects data around the SAT, the Illinois Science Assessment. DLM is the Dynamic Learning Maps. That's for our students that might have an IP. Our participation rate in the IAR. Eighth grade passing Algebra I, that is also another data point that we've been working with the high school on. And ninth grade on track. So, Kim will talk about those a little bit. Our graduation rate, it has improved a little from last year, but we are working very, very hard to get that back into the typical range of what we're used to seeing around that 85, 86 percentile. And then this is a fairly new statistic, that community college remediation piece. So, another interesting tab, if you would like to see our growth compared, so we only have the IAR data for 3/8 for 2019. So, this is district data on this slide. But if you're interested and want to dig down a little deeper, you can click on the grade and demographics, and this allows you to go into, say you wanted to just see third You can compare how our third graders are doing specifically. If you'd like to see some of our student groups, like Black or Hispanic, you can click on these low-income English learners. To switch from ELA, you just go back up to the top, and there you are. You can switch to math. If you'd like to see SAT scores compared to the rest of the state, and because we've taken SAT now for more than one year, we're able to look at our growth in that area. So, there's an ELA and a math. And I'm not gonna go into it. I'm just really just, again, show and telling a little bit. Same thing for science assessment. The dashboard basically works the exact same way. Passing Algebra, we're able to see. This is a nice feature where they give us our current number, percentage of students passing Algebra I, and compare us to the rest of the state, and then we can look at the five-year trend. So, this is nice to give us a little trend data. We're able to do that with ninth grade on track. And this number just means these are our freshmen who are on track to graduate on time and are college and career-ready. And this also has a five-year... Okay. So, then, I would want to show you, if you're associated, a parent, or a teacher, and really wanna look at your school and not just district data, there's a Schools in the District tab. This takes us to, we see our summative designations. But you can also click on a school. So, if we look at King School here, we basically get the same school snapshot as the district And again, you're able to drill down and look more specifically at academic progress for that school. And we can do that for any of our campuses. So, specific questions, I think that's all I really wanted to just show you related to the report card. I know if you have time and want to go in, you have questions about specifics. The Students tab gives us all that demographic data, our ethnicity data. This is really important information that we use for all of our grants. This is that teacher data, our pupil-to-teacher ratio, our teacher retention, the number of teachers we have. Questions specifically about the school report card? Okay. So, I would invite you to go in, play around a little bit, navigate the site, parents, teachers, community members. We welcome any questions that you might have. And now, I'm gonna turn it over to Kim, who is going to talk about some very specific information that I've just shown you in the report card.
Okay. Good evening. Tonight, I'm gonna continue our discussion with the school report card update and also the... and also the summative designations. You also have a handout at your seat that shows the four designations. First is exemplary, and that is the performance for schools that are in the top 10%. And for high schools, it's high schools with a graduation rate higher than a 67%. And no underperforming student groups at or below the all-student group and the lowest performing 5% of all schools. Commendable is the same, as I just mentioned, as exemplary, but it is not in the top 10 performance in the state. Underperforming has one or more student groups underperforming at or below the all-students group and the lowest performing 5% of all schools. Groups must have at least 20 students and at least four indicators. The lowest performing group is the lowest performing 5% of Title I eligible schools statewide. Also in your packet, you'll see a definition, the definitions of the indicators that just provides further detail on the pie charts that we'll be looking at. So if we look at the K to 8 band, some things that have changed is we now have English Language proficiency added, that 5%. Also, science is new from the Illinois Science Assessment. That's 5%. And the math and ELA, it went from 10% down to 7.5% each so that we could get the science portion in there. For the high school, some things that have changed from the previous year is the Culture Climate Survey. That's the five essentials, and that percentage is the percentage for students that have taken it. And that's going, that has increased from 5% to 6.67. And the freshman on track has increased from 6 and 3/4 to 8.3. So that's a change, as well as the chronic absenteeism for the high school is now 10%. So the summative designation, and that's the designation that I mentioned, those four, the exemplary, commendable, underperforming, and lowest performing. And that describes how well a school is meeting the needs of students based on those multiple indicators that were shown on those pie charts. And it determines which schools are in need of more support. So if you have a lowest performing or underperforming, then more supports are put in place for the schools. So for our summative designations, you'll see last year's in orange, 2018, compared to this year for 2019. So you'll see that Urbana High School, Lille, King remain commendable. Yankee Ridge is now commendable. The black subgroup has been eliminated. UMS is underperforming. It remains underperforming. And Dr. Preston Williams and Wiley improved to underperforming, where they were lowest performing previously. At Dr. Preston Williams, the Hispanic English learners and low-income subgroups were removed. And at Wiley, the white-black subgroup, low-income, were all removed. And this year, Thomas Payne is underperforming. So this will be a planning year for them, and then they will have $15,000 as they develop their, look at their Illinois Quality Framework and rate their performance in different areas, along with develop a school improvement plan with specific goals tied to their areas of need. Some notable news is that this year, we're proud to say that we don't have any schools that are lowest performing. Yankee Ridge, Dr. Preston Williams Jr. and Wiley advance to a higher designation. Some other things that we noticed is the diversity in staff has increased in multiple ethnicities from the previous year. The PARC was replaced with the Illinois Assessment for Readiness in 2019. 64% partially met to exceeded in ELA, and 65% partially met to exceeded in math. The SAT ELA average is 1% higher than the state in the exceeds category, which is 12%. And we saw a little bit of an increase, 50.3% of our teachers hold a master's degree or higher. So some areas of focus that we're going to really be intensely working on is the increase in the ninth grade on track. We did see a major dip from 83% to 73%. And as Dr. Ivory Tatum mentioned, the high school graduation rate did improve 1%, but we want to get us back to 86, where we were a few years ago, into the mid 80s. The chronic absenteeism rate was at 36% for the 2018-19 school year. And we're going to continue to work to move all schools to commendable or exemplary. So this chart represents the site-based expenditure reporting. And you can see demonstrated at each school, the graph will go from lowest to highest. So you'll see that our elementary schools are very close. These expenditures are for, the majority of it is for staffing or instructional resources. It does not include capital outlay for facilities, property, or major equipment. It's all staff resources. So you may wonder why early childhood is higher, and that's because of the student-staff ratio. It requires more staff in that area. And then you'll see the, that last one is for Gerber and Cunningham and Circle for those expenses. So things that we will be working on, as I mentioned, Thomas Payne is in their planning year. So this will be new to them. We do have the other schools that have been through this process. But we will be starting with the Illinois Quality Rubric and then working on their school improvement plan. All designated schools collaborate to assess their progress and revise their plans. We will be bringing those plans back before December 30th. And for Thomas Payne, they will have till June 30th for their plans, since this is their first year. Designated schools offer extended day services for reading and math. We have a comprehensive new teacher mentoring and thorough induction program. High-quality professional development for our teachers and support staff. We're dedicated to being laser-focused at examining attendance, discipline, academic data monthly, and recalibrating the direction as needed. At Central Office, we're reviewing that data every few weeks. We have a data support team here, and then we meet with the principals monthly to review that data and so that they can then have those conversations in their buildings as well. And also, the SEL support and meeting the needs, meeting the needs of the whole child will continue to be a priority. And those voices were clearly heard tonight. We definitely know that we are a major support for mental health for our students, and we want to continue to drive that as well. Any questions?
Board members' questions? On the school finance page, the district average, is that absolutely skewed by the Gerber numbers?
So can you pull that one up again? Dr. Ivory Tatum?
The line that goes across by Urbana, by both, is it skewed by Urbana, early childhood? In other words, is it possible for us to get a district average for K-12?
No, I think we have to report every, all of our sites that are considered.
I know we have to.
Oh, you mean.
But I'm saying for internal purposes.
Oh, I guess we could do that.
Can you disaggregate what has been reported from the state?
Sure.
So that we can, I mean, it.
Yeah, this slide was directly off of our district report card page. And so it was prepared for the site-based expenditure reporting for that purpose.
Well, my problem is, I think it distorts the true situation in that it shows six schools below average, two schools at average, and one school substantially over and the other one over. And the ones that are over are not part of our K-12 curriculum. So when you just look at K-12, it looks like we only have two schools that are at average and the majority of them under average. And I would say that would be wrong.
And partly, this is because we have to report the number of staff and because of the requirement at early childhood for TA support. And of course, we know at Gerber, the number of staff members that are there, who, you know, some are employed by Cunningham, but others are employed by. The district drives that average way up.
That's my point. And so I don't for a second feel that Urbana Middle School, Yankee Ridge, Wiley, Thomas Payne, Lille, and Williams are that much below the average. I think if you calculated the average on just a K-8, K-12, I'm sorry, K-12 basis, the schools would be awfully, awfully similar.
We could do that.
I know in larger districts, there's a lot of complaints about certain schools and certain neighborhoods not receiving adequate funding compared to others. And ours might just be a difference of one child per class because our average class size is comparable across all of our buildings, all of our K-12 buildings.
You're absolutely right. We can do that. And I did do, I went around and did a little comparison and compared our district to some of our neighboring districts in our county. And we're not that far off from where other people are in terms of the formulas that they gave us in order to calculate this. Everyone had to kind of follow the same rules. So I think, you know, our picture does not look that much askew from other places. I guess I'll say that. But we can definitely, Carol, we can work on that and get you that information.
I just think we need to communicate the right message to, internal to the district as well as external.
Absolutely.
I think to piggyback on that, John, too, because the News Gazette article that came out today breaks down the spending, the highest spenders per local districts, and it lists us as high because we spend on average $8,200-some dollars on our 4,500 students. But readers may not know, what you've just told us and what you've just pointed out is that other districts may not have the specialty schools that we have in Gerber and early childhood and things like that. So I don't want people thinking that we're, you know, throwing away money because we've got all this money to spend. Why aren't we performing well when we've got lots of other needs that other places may not have?
And even King, you know, as they have the ESL program, it is kind of added to their FTE allocations as well. So that's why they're right there at the, at that line.
Williams also has similar staffing needs as does Prairie and Lille. But I think it's, the Gerber school really distorts our statistics. And for good reason. It's a valuable program, and it's intended to be intensive program. But it just makes the rest of the district look different than what it would look otherwise if Gerber did not exist.
And again, this is compared to numbers of students. So when you think about the number of staff related to the enrollment at that campus, that's why that number is.
I understand.
Yep.
And just to clarify, that is not just Gerber. That's Cunningham, that's Circle, Circle Ready. It's all of our outplacements, private, anything we send to. I think there's one up north we send a couple of students to. It's all outplacements. It's not just Gerber. There's like 70 students.
Which makes the student body larger, which makes it more impactful.
70 students.
70 students.
Or what is in that, in that last column?
We just have a comment, well, kind of comment slash question. I know it takes a while, clearly, to move the needle on various designations, you know, so I'm glad to see that we are, we're doing that, but it does take time. But it is true, I guess this, I'm just looking for an affirmation, that districts that have greater, more subgroups, as we do, more English language learners, more students with disabilities, more low-income students, et cetera, have a greater challenge in moving the needle because all the subgroups have to progress in order for the designation to move ahead. Isn't that correct?
Absolutely.
So districts with fewer subgroups.
Yes, with less diversity.
Right.
And they have changed the subgroup number. It used to be a much larger number, you know, back in the days of ISAT and PARC. And now, if you have a subgroup of even 20, then you're, that is a student group, which 20 is not a very big number when you look at a school like Urbana Middle School, Urbana High School, even Dr. Williams. And again, you're absolutely right, Peggy. A place like Urbana Middle School, they basically have every subgroup because they have, you know, almost 1,000 students, so.
I mean, that's clearly what enriches our district. But I think that's often misunderstood by the public, that, you know, why are some school districts moving ahead so quickly and others, you know, recognize that you really are comparing apples and oranges in a way.
One of the data inputs into this formula was percent freshman on track. I just wondered if you could explain exactly what that means and what we're doing to improve that?
Yeah, so that is calculated with true freshmen. So, and it looks at the areas that their core classes. So passing their core classes, it didn't count electives. So it's English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. So to be proactive, some things that we're doing this year is we're running a report every week. And we're actually being much harder on ourselves because we're looking at failing any course, so even their electives right now. And we're comparing that from week to week to make sure that we're really focusing on our students. We also want to make sure that our data is clean. So when we get reports from the state twice a year, so after the first semester, we will have some time to look at that report. It's downloaded from the school information system, statewide information system. And we can see if there's any corrections that we need to make. So for example, are there some students on there that aren't true freshmen? We want to make sure it's just true freshmen. Or if there's students that are being homeschooled, we have to look at that and make sure that students are being properly identified on those reports. So moving forward, those are going to be some things that we, because it could have been from just data not being clean, how that was even reported. And so we want to make sure that we do a better job with that. I hope that helps answer your question.
And I pulled up the pays on the report card. They've done a really, I'd say, a decent job of giving some context around some of the designation areas. So this is, yeah, the 10 semester credits, no more than one F in a core class, as Kim said. It does not include anything done in the summer, so.
I had another quick question, and I've asked this before about funding, since this is now our second full year of getting these reports, right? And the underperforming schools get a certain cash amount from the state or wherever to increase their performance. Looks like we've done that this past year. But do we ever get to see how the money from the last year, if we did succeed in pushing the needle forward, if that money was directed where we thought it should have been directed? Or the reverse, if we, you know, fell short, then where do we need the money? I mean, how do you break that down?
I think we'll have a better indication after this year because it was, it was difficult last year because by the time the grant was approved, it was April. And so, but I will have to say, so money's been allocated towards Chromebooks, or it was, there was some summer school programs that helped. The extended learning opportunities make a huge difference by being able to provide tutoring for our students and really specific interventions for reading beyond the hours of the school day. So that will help. But I think we'll have some clearer data on that moving forward since now the money's not coming at the tail end of it.
And all the schools are required to complete a quality rubric. And the rubric walks them through very specific indicators and asks like where their need areas are. And those also give the school kind of those guiding questions around, where should we be putting our funding? You know, it kind of helps them pull out their chronic absentee. our funding, you know? It kind of helps them pull out their chronic absenteeism, you know, looking at your student academic data, like where are the places that that money will have the most bang for its buck, basically. And that rubric helps them kind of make those decisions. So Kim's working with each school individually on completing those plans.
Okay. So, and I mean, so that our district doesn't operate in a vacuum, or any district isn't, does the state now combine, getting this data and, and looking at it throughout the entire state to see what trends there are and how money that's being allocated is helping or not helping different districts who need it? I mean, are they, are they providing that information to us as we move through this?
They are gathering that information. So there's periodic reports that we have to do multiple times a year to report how our students are doing. And then we work with an ISB consultant, Dr. Weber, as well. And she's going to be, she's a great resource for us. And she's going around to each school with us to make sure that we're looking at key points. And she's sharing some data with us. It's particularly helpful. Dr. Ivory Tatum and I even are meeting with her tomorrow. And then she's going to be doing, as I mentioned, meeting with each school, too, that's impacted.
I sat through her presentation Friday during Staff Development Day at Dr. Williams. And because she's assigned several districts in our area, she's able to give us information Kim and I would never have around the work that she's doing with other specific schools and how they're moving the needle. And she can share that. So she's coming and sharing some resources with us this week from other districts that she's working with. So it's good that we have that opportunity to consult with her, so.
That's great. I know the more years we do it, the more information we get. So I hope that it lasts a while so we get good data. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Yes. Other?
Anything else, board members? All right, can we move on to-
We sure can. I'm going to just stay here. Linda's going to come join me.
Social, emotional district support staff?
Yes. Oh, thanks, Randy. So, audience, this sheet is in the back, this little mini packet. And board members, you have this at your seats. Yours is a little different from the public because as we're talking about, about, about specific positions, you have budget information on yours that isn't available to the public just for privacy, right? Confidentiality. And some of our staff who we may know are in some of these positions, you know, just to protect their privacy around their salaries and things like that, we've not put this out for the public, but board members do have this information. So as we've had the conversations around the SRO, we, you know, I've taken a couple of emails. We've had some discussions here at the board level. We had some great comments this morning, this morning, we don't want to go backwards, this evening, from even like Alicia, talking about the need for SEL. And I think, as Kim said in the presentation, SEL is a high priority for us. And it will continue to be as we look at the whole child. I just wanted to, is, kind of give the board maybe an update. I know, as I've been going back, looking at information from the last year, basically the last two years, it's been very enlightening to me to see all of the wonderful social, emotional, learning supports that the district has put in place. You know, when I came in in July, it was a lot, right? And I'm just going to be very honest and transparent, you know, I was having all the acronyms, you know, for a while I was calling it alphabet soup because it was hard for me to kind of keep up with all the acronyms and who was doing what. So I basically spent the month of July working with the principals, people like Ms. Shear, who works with the Student Engagement Advocates, Linda. Todd was a great resource and just others who really kind of really helped me understand the positions that we've added and really what these folks are doing. Because we have just extreme wealth of human capital in our schools. And, you know, only being gone two years and walking around places like the middle school and high school, like introducing myself, who are you and what do you do? I just met a lot of really interesting people. But again, I think there were a lot of folks who we really wanted to give them some professional development and some training and really spend some time talking about what the roles, what the human capital that we have, how we can be, how they can best be supporting our students. I first would like to say thank you to the board for just adding some of the positions that we've had. And I think Alicia said it well, when we're already starting to see some of the additional SEL supports that have been put in place at the middle school and the high school. And again, you know, we don't have any magic pills, right? But, and it will take time to see some of these things come more to fruition. But I think we're already starting to see it. And that is, you know, a big thank you to you for seeing that need and having the insight to put some of these positions in place. So that's kind of my beginning spiel. I don't know, Linda, if you want to say anything to add to that. Okay. So again, as we've talked about the SRO and we, we understand the financial obligations that we're entering into by approving that. But I did just want to kind of balance that conversation a little bit with some of the social, emotional supports that we have already put in place. So as you know, we have several social workers. We have, are very lucky to have social work interns as well. Alicia, the addition, additional social worker added to the high school. We've also added an additional social worker to the middle school. We have two at early childhood. And we're very blessed that we have one at every single elementary. You know, there's some districts where they share, you know, social worker is in one building halftime and they go somewhere else for the other half of their day. So I think we're very thankful for our school's social workers. And this list is not exhaustive by no means. So Alicia, if you see a million other things that you do every day that are not on this list, we were just trying to give the board kind of a general idea of what our school's social workers do every day. And again, this is, we probably could have filled up all four of these pages with just some of the things that they do. So this is just a, and I'm not going to walk through all of them. Board members have read this because they had it in advance. Clinical professionals is a fairly new position. Again, we have three at UMS, and those have just been added in the last two years. And we have 1.5 at Urbana High School. The reason we have 1.5, I've learned, is we wanted to, but they're not the easiest position to find. I think we've been thankful for the people that we have. They're amazing. And we'd like to have two full-time people at Urbana High School, but we, the person, the 1.0 that we have there is great. And the other half is being filled with a retiree who works part-time. So we're really lucky to have her. And the need was for two, but we are happy to have the 1.5 that we have. And you have the costs associated with that on your spreadsheet. The restorative prac- and again, I think this one is a fairly new one. So maybe I will pause a little bit here and look at some of the things that the clinical professionals do. The way they function at the middle school and high school is a little different. That's why you see that designator of that six through eight there. Because at the middle school, the clinical professionals are doing things like SEL lessons, which is very much a, an elementary kind of concept around the PBIS and those social academic instructional groups and doing, and that is unique to be doing those things at the middle school level. So we're thankful to have that there. Overseeing the SEA role, which we're going to talk about here in a few minutes, the Student Engagement Advocates, they're really part of a student support team. And that, that is a, that kind of has grown into more of that middle school model. And at the high school, they have a caseload where they work with very specific students individually. Anything to add? Linda? Linda knows, Linda works with those folks.
Yeah, I mean, I have the pleasure of working with all of these positions and getting to know all of the people in these positions. And the clinical professionals, just met with one of them yesterday, and it's our new clinical professional. I was just very impressed by the relationship she has with students already. I saw several come to her office, connect with her. You know, I know that she's really working with students with various needs in a more therapeutic manner. So there are different levels. And I think our clinical professionals are definitely working with kids in a therapeutic way.
Restorative practices facilitators. As you know, we had one initially. And that position grew as part of the restructuring of the deans into three positions at UMS. The restorative practices facilitators function, they work with a grade level. So we have, you know, one at sixth grade, one at seventh grade, one at eighth grade. And they, too, are part of the student support team. At the middle school, they've been doing, you know, some coordination around student engagement. I'm looking at, of course, they facilitate circles. They do a lot of the data tracking around the circles and around that individual student need, those restorative interventions that are necessary for students. You can see more of that here. They meet with parents. They make parent contacts. They're able to actually rehold, hold reentry meetings with parents when a student has been out for an out-of-school suspension and comes back. They work with the administrators to do that. And they are actually, this is something new that from last year, originally this position was just a social support, but now they are able to be more of, have more of an administrative input on suspend, whether a student should be suspended or not for some, you know, gross misconduct issue that may have occurred at the school. So that is the restorative practices facilitators. Student interventionist is not new. That is basically the restructuring of the deans at the high school. So, you know, as you know, they are under a new name. So this is some of the things that that position does. Again, they are assigned, they have their alphabet groups at the high school that they work with. And they do a lot of things. So it isn't just a discipline position. They're working with the administrative team. They're meeting with students. They do a lot of supervision. Hallways, I go in the lunchroom. I was in the lunchroom yesterday. And the student interventionists are a presence there, sitting at the tables with kids, walking around, talking to students. They help kind of work with Linda and Kim and do a lot of that discipline data tracking, you know, to help us come up with incentives and interventions.
They are usually the first response. If there's a situation at the high school, they're the first to be called in. They go into classrooms. So they're involved with a lot of students. They sort of are the ones that designate who will next respond to the situation or intervene with the students.
And again, I think, I, you know, I like to say things like boots-on-the-ground people. These are like boots-on-the-ground people in terms of getting there quickly, you know, knowing most of the kids, being able to problem solve something, you know, if this is a situation that needs to, you know, go to another administrator, or is this something that they can deal with and help reset a student or refocus them to get them back on track and get them to class, things like that. They, too, now are able to suspend with an administrator having that conversation if something has happened. Because again, they are working more directly with the students and see those patterns. So, you know, I think the administrators take the advice of the student interventionists because they can say things like, yes, this, you know, this is the third day in a row that this has happened. And I worked with that, you know, the first day we did this, the second day we did, the second day we did this. Not at the same time. It's crazy. So again, I think because they work with the students and they see those patterns in behavior, right? And with SB 100, we want to look at every student individually. So because these are kind of the first point of contact for, for the students, they can give that history to the administrator to say, this is what's been happening this week or last week or. School counselors, we know those are not new. So we have three at UMS, four at the high school. They function a little bit differently in each place. So you can see those notes on the side. So SEAs, Student Engagement Advocates, this is a fairly, it's something that's been around for a few years. You know, it was here even when I was in the district before. But it has grown exponentially in terms of the amount of supports that we provide across the district. So we continue to have three that are shared at the elementary level. But we have six at Urbana Middle School and four at Urbana High School. And one of their primary functions is to, you know, track attendance because that is, as you saw in the student report card, the school report card, chronic absenteeism is a concern. And so we need people who are looking at that very specifically at every campus. They work with the clinical, clinical professionals for SEL interventions. They work with the restorative practice facilitators for restorative behavioral consequences. They also, I think, do a lot of supervision. And they're just, again, boots-on-the-ground people that are supporting students. And at the middle school, they're very much a part of the student support team. I'm going to let Linda add a little bit. I know she's been working with Shauna Shear to provide, this is a group that I think we added, added, added. In the last two years, we added several positions, but I don't think there was, as we added, if there was concentrated training or PD. So that's been something that we've put a lot of effort into this year.
Yeah. So they, they have a little bit different role at the two, two schools, but at both buildings, they push into classrooms. They deal with kids when they're having issues. But then they also look at data and see where the kids who are, have the most absences and are considered truant, they intervene with those students pretty immediately and touch base with them multiple times during the year, set up different interventions with them, talk with their parents. So their job, truly, that's one of the main goals, is to work with chronic absentees. We are doing some pretty extensive training. We meet with the group monthly. Tomorrow, we're going to do some de-escalation training with them. We've also, we had Lucia Maldonado come in and talk about our ELL students. And, you know, next, we're probably going to do some work around trauma. So we are doing some very extensive training right now with the group.
Which was something that I think was missing. And they've, they were asking for it. So I don't think it's like something we just imposed on them, right? They were really eager to learn more and know more. And so they've really been soaking that up, I think.
Right. And I will say, some of them are very experienced. We have one at the middle school who is doing a lot of work around mindfulness. And she's doing some classes with students and everything. So there's varying degrees of experience, but they bring a real wealth to our buildings.
And then student relations supervisors, you know, this is a position that I didn't include that in the numbers. So the Student Engagement Advocates and the Student Relations Supervisors, you'll see, there's that number of, that new number in terms of new adds and the last two, that budget number. They're not, they're not included in that because we've always had student relations supervisors. It's not a new position. But what we have done in recent years is we have added. So there was one added to UMS specifically for the kiosk, you know, because having eight is a much larger number than we've had in the past. We have eleven at the high school. There's always been the need of, at the middle school, of escorting students back and forth to the school-based health center. That's something that, you know, some years that's really gone well, and other years is something we need to work on. So currently, it's something that we continue to work on. But we've had a constant presence. I think that was something Dr. Williams came here with last year to say we need somebody at the kiosk at all times. And that is happening at both, at both campuses, basically. There's somebody there to check in students and guests. There's somebody there to check in students and guests, making sure that people have hall passes. I know another thing that the board was gracious enough to do last spring, when Dr. Weemel and Principal Brown came and asked for additional SRS support, one thing that the board approved was additional hours. So, typically, in years past, these folks have worked six hours or six and a half. And at that time, the board increased those hours to eight. So, they kind of stagger their arrival time. So, there's always someone on campus before the students arrive to supervise and be there and available as kids gather and go to breakfast and are outside. And then there are more people available for dismissal. So, it's just been another additional, additional positions that are, I, I see them as helping keep our campuses safe because they're many times in the right place, the places that they need to be at the right time. So, additional, other additional adds, I think that we've put in more of, at an, from an administrative lens. We've added an AP, additional AP at UMS. That position is now called the vice principal. We added, we've always had four. Part of that administrative team at the high school has always had four people, now we have five. That was something we added last year. We have two elementary APs now. You know, we added the one at Dr. Williams several years ago when the aroma there was really, really high. We continue to have that one, but we've also added at Yankee Ridge. And then we've also added the one that is shared between King and early childhood. And then, we added the literacy interventionist, not really an administrative one, and the licensed teacher in the RE room at Urbana High School. So, anything else you want to add, Linda? I have a working copy here. So, as you can see, just looking at, and I know our public doesn't have this, but looking at all of the positions that we have, when Kim mentioned that bullet point of looking at the whole child, this, you know, and of course, you know, our teachers, you know, I'm not downplaying the role that, you know, TAs and support staff and all the psychologists and all the other people who really do important things in our district, how much they play in the growth and development of the whole child. But these positions specifically have taken on the task of really providing those social emotional supports at our campuses. And so, you know, in, in looking at our overall budget, we're spending about $3 million in salaries on all of that wealth of human capital that we have at our disposal right now. And then, just in the last two years, again, very grateful that we have been a forward-thinking district and putting more resources and supports. In the social, emotional, mental health arena, we've added about 1.2 million in salaries. And these are just licensed positions. These are not, again, like the SRSs and student engagement advocates. This is, this is in salaries associated with people who are certificated or licensed staff. So, I think, not to say that we couldn't have more, we definitely could. But, I, you know, I'd like to spend more time, again, I'm only been here a few months and I think we've made some strides just in the last few months, working with our administrative teams and, and some of these positions to get us in more of a focused, intentional path on how we would, how we need to use some of these folks. So, I think I'd like to, you know, yes, we can continue to add, 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 but I'd like to deepen and strengthen what we're already, the positions that we already have and, and just, just make them more intentional as we move forward.
And I would just say that, looking back over the last year and a half or so, I, I think that these positions are working together in a much more intentional manner and a more systematic approach. So, they all know their positions a little bit better. They've, they're able to work together by supporting each other, by talking to each other. They keep track of, of who, which students they're seeing, where the issues are. And I think that they're doing a much better job being a real, true, support student services to students in our schools. And, you know, this is something that I, I really value and for the bulk of my career have really hoped that we would add positions like this to the district. I know that finding positions and connections in the community can be really a challenge. Our social service agencies really vary and they change. So, we can have a partnership with a social service agency one year and the next year it's gone. So, this is one way that we can always be very sure that we have the positions here in our schools. And I appreciate, I truly appreciate that.
Board members, I have, I, I'm gonna start out by saying that despite having been here for a long time, all the new titles and all the responsibilities are very confusing. I, when you read through them and I look at this and even looking at this shortened list, I see a lot of overlap. I see differences. If, I, I think if I was a student and got used to how things worked in seventh and eighth grade and then went to ninth grade and the titles are all different and the responsibilities are all different, I'd, I'd become disoriented. And so, I'm not advocating for fewer people, I'm not. But it seems to me that some rationality needs to be brought to the system to where it's a little bit more understandable to board members, but to parents and families as to what the difference is between a student interventionist and an SEA or what the difference is between, and why there are more people of some titles at the middle school than there are at the high school. And yet, you find out that, well, oh, I see, some of the job responsibilities are shifted around differently. And I, I would just hope that as we continue to develop, refine and train, that maybe we could find a way to bring some rationality to the titles so that there aren't different titles or, or that the same title doesn't do something different at, at different schools, be it elementary, middle or high school. So, that I can better understand this because quite honestly, if you came to us asking for more people...
And that's not our intent.
I can't, I cannot assess it.
Yes, and I don't think our...
Because I cannot assess what is currently going on versus what should be going on. And so, it's, it's exceedingly confusing.
And may I just clarify that there is really only two positions that the middle school and the high school do not have. So, the restorative practice facilitator at the middle school is comparable to the student interventionist at the high school.
So, why not call them the same thing?
Otherwise, you know, those were left up to the buildings at the time.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting, the errors, I'm just suggesting as we move forward and as we progress, can we bring the titles into alignment? So, that for those of us that don't work with this day in and day out, we have some ability to understand what the hell is going on.
And I see what you're saying, John, I understand that.
And I think that's something we have been working toward, is more streamlining. And we did get the middle school and the high school administrative teams together quite a bit this summer to talk about some, not so much between those two roles. You know, I think those two roles are, they do look and function very differently in those two schools. But in terms of the SRSs and the student engagement advocates, we had a lot of conversation around. One thing, you know, there were some, and, you know, until recently, some places they were running attendance reports, some places they weren't, some places they were doing meeting with groups of kids and some places they weren't. And so, I think in, you know, we've kind of taken baby steps in, in trying to streamline a six-12 model, right? And, and again, I think that is just going to take time because, you know, a, a lot of these folks were hired and told, this is what you were hired and this is what you're gonna be doing. And now to say, okay, oh, you, you were hired to do this, you thought you were doing this, but now you're doing that too, has taken a little training and a little professional development.
Because in the big picture of things, if total budgeted annual cost on my sheet, and I know the public doesn't have it, is roughly $3 million, $50,000. And of that $3 million and $50,000, 1.2 million of it have been added in the last two years, which represents a nearly doubling. That's, that's pretty much a doubling of effort in that area in two years. And so, the willy-nilly approach of just adding here and adding there and adding this and adding that, I think that needs to be, I'm speaking as one board member and other board members may feel differently. But if you want my support, that willy-nilly approach needs to be behind us and in front of us needs to be a more logical and direct approach and a more scientific way of looking at this with greater thinking, greater strategic planning. So, that we don't have a fire and so, we hire somebody to put out the fire only to find out that, well, that just caused another fire to happen and we didn't have the, we didn't have the right skillset in the persons to make sure that things happened in a logical, predictive way to where I can properly handle it budgetly, budget-wise. Because there will come a time in this district, I don't think it's in the not-too-distant future, when we will be talking about budget reductions. And I could not judge at this point in time what I would want to keep and what I would have to say, you know what? And, and I've sat through three or four of those processes and they're painful, painful, painful. And they're even more painful when you don't understand what's going on. And right now, I don't understand. Thank you for putting this in front of us so that I can get a better understanding. But the management side of my background says, these people have got to be confused about what they're supposed to do and what they're not supposed to do and who's supposed to do what and who's not supposed to do what. And so, what that tells me is that sometimes people are gonna be tripping over each other on some tasks while other tasks are gonna slip between the cracks and not get done. And that would be problematic in my mind.
So, we agree. I think, you know, Linda, as she said, this is a passion for her. So, she's been spending a lot of time working with both campuses on doing exactly what you said is streamlining and making sure that we are using these people in, in where we need to. Because you're right, you know, I, I kind of came in thinking we do have a lot of people and what is everyone doing? But I, I feel like we do have a more intentional plan. And as we continue to streamline and continue to put in these systems of support that, and, and working with our administrators, again, we have very young administrative teams. And I think we've been working with them and trying to provide support for their leadership around how they are utilizing some of these people as well. So, I, I, we didn't put this in front of you to say that we wanted to, we're asking for more. I think we have, again, as I started off with, we have a lot of human capital that we need to be just using more intentionally. Kim mentioned the data pieces. That is something I think has been fairly new, is making sure that we're using data and making decisions around who's getting interventions and who needs support and who's tracking what kids, so we don't have kids falling between the cracks, whether it's for discipline, whether it's for mental health, whether it is for conduct. So, I, I think we completely agree with you, John, and, which is why we've started doing more of this.
Other board members, sorry, I monopolized.
So, what process is being done to determine like a needs assessment? My, my biggest concern here is we added, you know, 1.2 million, whatever it was, right? And a possibility of that went to the half of our students who are in our elementaries. So, I mean, what, what are we doing, I guess, district-wide to determine that really our resources are allocated where they need to be?
Sure.
And how do we continually reassess our needs so that we're applying our limited resources in the right places?
So, I think John brought up a good point, right? I think a lot of the things that were added were because we had some places that were on fire. And these people were the water hoses and the water pumps that we brought in to kind of help put the fires out. I'm just being very honest, right? So, and, and at the time, you know, you can't just throw bodies and people at things. They need to have direction, they need to have support, they need to have guidance, have, you know, training. So, I think we're doing all of those things and again, it's just been a few months. And, you know, we're tracking data, we're looking, you know, Linda works with all of the administrators around office referrals, discipline data, in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions. We've started tracking, yes, attendance, which, you know, had kind of fallen by the wayside a little bit. Risk ratios around, not just looking at the number of in-school and out-of-school suspensions that we have, but looking at very intentional student groups. How many African-American kids, how many African-American boys, how many Hispanic, how many students with disabilities? And looking at how we can, how we're seeing growth or decreases, rather. We don't want to see growth in discipline, but the decreases in those risk ratio numbers. So, we're, I think this year is really a baseline year. We're, you know, we're, we're trying to get everybody set on the right path. And I think in years to come, with this kind of support at, at the middle school, high school level, we'll be able to make better predictions around, you know, do we really need 11 student relations supervisors anywhere? You know, if we're, if we're doing a better job of supervising and putting interventions and supports in place for kids and we don't need that many people in hallways. But again, this is our baseline year and this is the year that we're, we're collecting a lot of that information, so.
They're also looking at how they're intervening with the students too. So, they're gonna have some rather large, you know, Google Sheets filled with information about what they're doing, how they're intervening and we'll be able to look at that too.
Yeah, I mean, the only other comment really is just to piggyback, because when I looked at this, I thought, what a, what a helpful overview and it is a super helpful overview. But my, the question that came to my mind right away is, you know, what's the overarching structure that connects these various SEL personnel and supports to be sure that students aren't falling through the cracks or there aren't, or staff aren't working at cross purposes, there aren't redundancies? Or maybe some parents are getting lots of calls from personnel because they don't, SI doesn't know that SES is, you know, and are already contacting that parent. So, you know, some parents are hearing from people all the time and other parents aren't at all. So, yeah, just that overarching structure.
Sure.
Sounds like that's what you're working on, so.
Yeah, we are.
That's sort of the glaring omission to my mind, so, thank you.
I don't want any of our comments to discourage the, the type of supports that we put in place. It's just, it has to be a rational program to be defensible when it comes time to allocating dollars.
Oh, we completely agree, appreciate that.
All right, I think we're ready to move on then, any, anything else?
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
All right, yes, thank you, Linda. There are no policy reviews tonight, we do have some individual action items. And we can handle it as a consent agenda or as an individual. And with the exception of possibly, do people understand the UMS emergency expenditure? And if you don't, I would prefer to handle this as a consent agenda, just ask that it be pulled off. We would have three items on our consent agenda. UMS emergency expenditure having to do with some damage to our gym floors, on the decks, on the decks. New activity account for Urbana High School, for STEM Explorer Club and administering medicines to students policy that we've looked at before. If there would...
Yeah, so we, we do, I did, Todd was gonna just share a little bit around what we came up with as our administrative procedure.
So, this is the one we pulled off, a...
So this is the one we pulled off of press because we needed a little time to look at, uh, undesignated asthma medication and whether we could secure a supply of it, which we have through the help of the school-based health center. And we're putting procedures in place that will have all of that, that in all of our schools. So that's a go.
All right. No, it can be handled as a consent agenda. Is it, if board members are unhappy with consent, we'll go back to individual, but I'll take a motion from the floor for whatever option you guys want.
I approve the, uh, I moved to approve all three of these as a consent agenda.
Second? Moved in second at roll call because there is expenditure.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Vice President Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. President Demmett?
Yes, motion's carried.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Exum, I apologize.
Tori, sorry about that. Oh, my gosh.
I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, motion is, that's approved, and so we're done with our individual action items. We are now finally ready, this is a study session, we're ready to do a study topic.
Okay, so I'm gonna invite, um, Chief Sarah Finn up. I just stayed here, it was just easier. And we also have Deputy Chief Searls, like, you, you come up to the front if you want in case, you don't have to come to a mic, but you can just sit in the front row. And then, um, we don't have this out for public today only because, um, we will put it out once it's signed. Again, this is our first read, the board's first, um, look at this. So once we, if, if it is approved, um, then we will, of course, have copies available with signatures at a, um, upcoming board meeting. But we do have the, hey, um, I'm displaying it as we talk. So I am not gonna read this, hopefully, yeah, God, right. Um, we've spent the better part of, I don't know, three or four weeks going back and forth between, um, the chief and I, uh, I always want to say Lieutenant Deputy Chief Searls, I have to get used to saying that, um, the city attorney, Carol's met with the, um, city manager, is that her title?
Finance director.
Finance director at the city, Elizabeth. Um, we've worked with our, our district attorneys have gone back and forth with this with me multiple times, so, um, you know, again, it is a first read, if there are things that you guys, there have been lots of eyes on this legally, professionally. Um, but again, if there are things that we need to tweak, this is the time for us to discuss it and, um, and do that. So you have a copy of this at your spots. I'll just kinda scroll through then as, as we go. If there are questions that the, uh, board has, we can stop, so please stop me, I'm gonna just kinda summarize as we go.
I was gonna say, since we have had a study session on this already.
Sure.
I would limit your comments to just things that have changed.
Well, I, I think I just wanted to kinda highlight certain specifics. Um, you know, I know we had comments this evening about searches and interviews, and I think those are things that people really want to hear about, how we're going to, how is the SRO going to be used in that capacity? So, again, I am not gonna like dig deep into it, um, but I did think there were some important things that we need to just kinda tease out and summarize. So this very beginning part is just all legalese, right? It's just whereas the city's gonna do this, we're gonna do this, um, but this first part here are the goals that we've been talking about. So, you know, a safe, secure, orderly learning environment, um, our SROs are going to be positive role models for our students, uh, we're gonna use them to help promote citizen awareness. Um, and again, we, we do feel like they are trusted, um, member, they will be trusted members of the school community. I agree with our, our, uh, public that we have a very long way to go to get there, but that is one of our goals. It's great to have goals, right? So that's a goal. Um, that our, one of our goals is, um, providing information regarding resources in the community, um, as, as a way for us to collaborate. And, um, one of my biggest, uh, uh, things I'm looking forward to is the improved security, um, for outside threats and that visible, um, presence, um, in terms of, um, that quick response if something were to hap- happen, um, at one of our campuses. So this first, first section is really all about the assignment of the SRO, right? So we've been talking about two full-time. Um, they are, again, we've said, public, uh, employees of the city. Um, the city's gonna make sure that they meet all the applicable requirements, um, all the regulations, they're gonna make sure that they have the background checks and all the information that they have to legally be police officers. Um, administrative control, this section is really, um, saying, yes, our SROs are law enforcement officers who are responsible for handling criminal matters, um, but they will also, uh, serve in the capacity of enforcing school regulations. Um, the chief and I have talked, and there's a whole section about this, is they don't want to be in the business of being disciplinarians at the school, and we don't want them to be in the business of being disciplinarians at the school. They're there for a very specific reason. Um, and that's all I'll say about that. Um, the presence of the SRO is not intended to usurp the rights and responsibilities of our building administrators to enforce the rules and policy of the district. Um, they're there in more of a support role. Um, I know this has been something that's been mentioned tonight, number four. Our, we do not anticipate that the SROs are formally trained counselors at all, um, and have, nor do we profess that they're going to have any, um, clinical counseling training and certifications. Um, but, um, they will, you know, support the administration and the district, um, in some of those conversations as the administrators want to use them. Um, the SROs are not there to give legal advice to our staff or to, um, other people in the district. This whole little section here is basically just saying the relationships of the parties, that, um, the SROs will, um, the city is, we're, you know, we're not entering into this partnership now and, and becoming, you know, a, a, a combined entity at all. This is just the legalese that kinda says they continue to function as an independent agency and, and we do too. So that's all A, B, and C, and D basically say. Selection and supervision of the SROs. Um, as we've discussed here, um, the SROs are subject to appointment by and will serve at the pleasure of the, uh, Urbana Police Department. Um, we will collaborate and be a part of that selection. Um, we're very grateful to be able to do that. But ultimately, the chief has the, um, final say and decision who is assigned and selected to fill that, that we, um, we've talked a lot about the amount of input that we'll be able to give to that process.
And not only have, will we, we, we have in the past, so I'm not aware of this ever.
Oh, yeah, Michelle, yes.
So.
Yep. Um, in the event of a substantial violation of board policy of, uh, for the Board of Education, uh, we've talked and we have it clearly in here, or if there's, um, alleged misconduct by the SRO, our attorneys were able to share a lot of kind of enlightening stories about some interesting things that other SROs have done across the state of Illinois, and hopefully none of ours will be doing that. Um, but this clause basically says that in the event any of those things were to happen, um, I just need to let the chief know, and then the chief at that point will, we will meet and discuss whether or not the SRO needs to be removed from their duties.
Yes.
Something else about that?
No, it just gives you the power, right, to do that?
Yes. SRO duties, um, this is very similar to the goals section at the beginning, basically, um, you know, what they're going to do, and we go into more in, uh, detail around these things. So, equipment and working conditions. This section basically just says the city's responsible for, for providing the two SROs, um, making sure they have the training that they need to do the job, um, that they're in good standing, and that they've, uh, done everything that they need to do to basically be on our campuses. Our responsibilities are, we're gonna make sure they have a space to work, which we've already been doing. Um, we're gonna make sure that that space has a desk and a chair and a workstation. Um, we're gonna make sure that they have opportunities to work with the teachers and administrators to really meet the, the goals and objectives, uh, for the program. So, um, section six is basically reporting of serious crimes. Um, this basically says in the event that an SRO sees a serious crime happening, um, on one of our campuses or, uh, in a building, um, they will do what they need to do to, uh, be, enforce the laws and make sure that if somebody's breaking the law, whether they're, may not even be a staff member, it might just be somebody walking through, um, the McKinley Field or something after a track meeting, they're, they happen to be there.
And likewise, if the school district uncovers something, they should notify the, the, the police via the SRO as well.
So this long section that's coming up is all about, um, the standard operating procedures of the SRO. So, um, this little section here, for purposes of this section, any requirement that the SRO provide a written report shall be satisfied by provision of a copy of the police report prepared. So, um, you know, we're not trying to have the SRO have to write a report for me and write a report for the building administrator and then have to go back to the police station and complete all their, um, police report paperwork. So part of this whole next section is, yes, there are things that the SRO is going to do that they need to communicate to us, but not every single, uh, communication needs to be in three different ways, um, or three different written reports. Um, I, we have a great relationship and partnership, and, um, I think as we request police reports or as we need information, you know, if the SRO has to, there's a section about, um, use of force. If they have to use force and maybe restrain a student, they're already gonna be required to complete, uh, paperwork for the department. They don't then have to sign, complete like two or three more reports for us. So that, that is basically what this section is talking about. Um, so lines of communication between the district and UPD, um, lines of communication between the SRO and the building administrators. Um, and then this whole section three is basically talking about, um, if the SRO has to, um, you know, intervene in a situation that might be threatening safety and security, um, they're going to complete a report and basically share it with, um, building administrators. Building administrators will then, um, the things that I need to know about will share those with me, and the things that you need to know about, then I will be sharing those with you. Uh, let me see if there were any specific ones I wanted to highlight. Yep. Thank you, Lori. Uh, so C is just saying things like if they need additional, like, you know, if they ever have to call for backup, they can call for backup, they don't have to call me first and say, hey, can I call for backup? They can call for backup. Uh, what else? I think these are all just really basic. Three was something that has come up quite a bit, is how we're gonna be interviewing students. So, um, interviewing minor students without their, there's very clear school code around how an SRO can interview a student, um, and if the, if the, um, parent is not available, um, if the parent doesn't give permission, we make sure, even now, without this agreement, we, we make sure that a, um, building administrator is present or designated, um, when students are interviewed.
Yeah, and that's something that, like she just alluded to, is currently the practice. As a matter of fact, I had Lieutenant Matt Bain and Sergeant Tim McNaught, both prior SROs. You guys helped me out and dig through seventeen pages. And so when I brought certain things up, they go, oh, that's, that's exactly how it works now. So this just memorializes, uh, the current practice.
Um, this talks about, we will make sure we interview, give students the privacy to have those conversations, no one will be removed from school, um, without, uh, the consent of a parent or guardian unless, uh, you know, a student is being, has done something that we have probable cause and they've ba- basically broken the law. So these are, uh, pretty clear searches, uh, we have very specific rules, um, that we have to, to adhere to around how we're able to search a student. So, um, this again, just memorializes that. And section B here goes, again, more in-depth on searches. Um, we have board policy language around searches that we incorporated into this because, of course, we would expect our SRO to comply with District Board Policy seven one forty around search and seizure. This section here, um, just really talks about how those searches are gonna happen in the presence of an administrator, an adult outside the view of others, preferably same sex as the student. This section is really talking about interviewing again, how we're required to interview students, um, with an adult present and with parent permission. This next section is, um, we expect our SROs to be part of our school safety planning and part of the district, um, the school crisis teams and hopefully the district crisis team. There may be times that they might be called to, um, be part of an administrative hearing around discipline, a suspension or expulsion. Um, section nine is all about confidentiality. Our SROs will have to follow the same rules that we follow around the Illinois School Student Records Act, um, and our FERPA rules will apply to them because they'll be working specifically with our students. Um, thi- this section is really all about the stu- the confidential student record. So, um, we expect that our SROs will have to have, um, personal information about the students, but then they will be required to follow those same confidentiality rules and only, um, be using that student information within the nexus of their role as the SRO related to something that's happening at school. Time and place of SRO presence. This basically, um, says we will set the time that they start, um, we expect them to follow the school day and the school calendar. Uh, we've talked a little bit here about what they might do in the summertime where we're not on school, um, on, during the school time. Um, this next section talks about how, uh, again, these are union positions, but we will be encouraging, um, the SROs to take their vacation in the summers whenever possible. Um, on the top of page thirteen, the chief and I have talked a lot about subs, um, and how we're going to cover positions, um, so that's this section here. Um, our current, our SR at the high school is on a vacation right now, and, um, when he's not there, we have felt it the last day or two. So, but there will be specific times where, you know, people will get hurt, right? Like and break an ankle or pull a muscle or.
Have to wear a boot.
Yeah, and like he's got his boot on today.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, and so there will be times where, you know, if they're out for, you know, were to come back and say, this person's gonna be out for six weeks, then the chief and I would get together and say, well, we really need to figure out some kind of coverage.
Correct.
Um, and we put in here the ends of the semesters, you know, we know November, that, that little break between Thanksgiving and winter break is really a high need time as well as at the end of the year. And there may be events that happen in the community, you know, and we had a, one of our students, a former student who's now ready, who was, um, shot several weeks ago, and, you know, that caused a lot of heightened anxiety in the building, and I can't imagine us not having the SRO those few days.
And those are the kinds of things that we wanted to, at least she and I know how we're gonna deal with those, and when those things do happen, if we have somebody who's, the SRO's getting married and on, in the honeymoon, then we'll try to, we will figure out a way to get, get people there, and we already know, especially, one of the values of having two is if somebody, that, you know, if there's one and this one's on their honeymoon, then we can immediately grab that one, and we've already had some discussions on going in-house. If that's not available, then how do we continue down to that third or fourth level?
So section eight is, um, oh, the other thing is overtime. We know that overtime will still be a, um, something that we'll have to work through, but again, that will be in collaboration, but the chief will have the, um, final approval of overtime for the, uh, SROs. The SRO program and SRO review, um, we will collaborate and collect feedback from the buildings. Again, I'm not there every day, neither is the chief, so we're gonna rely on our, uh, building administrators and the people who work, you know, the closest with the SROs to give us feedback on how they're doing, for their performance and annual, um, annual review information. These we'll talk about here in a little bit, so we can skip that whole section. That's Exhibit A, which you guys have, and here- And here at the end is this dispute, section fourteen. This basically is um, you know, we enter into this agreement, this is a, uh we've got it written in here right now um as a two and a half year. So basically, we, once and if and when this is approved, um we would be posting the new SRO position probably in a, in January. So we would be um looking at half of this year and then right now we have it for two years. So you know, ultimately a two and a half year agreement. Again, that is at the pleasure of the board. We can have that discussion on how long. Um so right now we have it going out to June of twenty twenty-two. And um this dispute resolution section is in the event we enter into this agreement and during these next two and a half years, if things are not going well for whatever reason, um and we uh default, maybe you know, we can't pay our bill and we can't, you know, come up with the money that we need to do this and or uh you know, things aren't working the way we both envisioned that they would work. This is our uh way that we can say we want to resolve the agreement.
Correct.
And that is it for the actual agreement itself. So questions about that and then we can talk about if if there's specific questions about costs. I know you're just seeing this and I apologize for that. Um we were meeting up until even this afternoon about a couple of items on here and getting some clarity around um the cost estimates. But before we do that, questions about the agreement specifically? And I can flip through to wherever you want, would like to go.
It says page numbers on it now.
We have pages now, yes.
So for the um the proposal with the SROs, we, these two officers if approved would be just working in the school district, right? I mean, are they?
No, yeah, they would not be the shared, right now they're, we have that shared model where their other half of their day, their other, some of their week, they're detectives.
Correct. So yes, they would, these are dedicated to the school and to youth. So we wouldn't have, I guess barring a nineteen ninety-six tornado or something that was absolutely nuts, I I can't imagine where we would be pulling them out. They are s- they are here for the school-
Okay.
-as part of both staffs.
So not like, so are they working cases with-
They might work cases resulting from the school. So uh cell phones are a big thing. My phone is missing and Little Johnny, I think, took it. So that's the kind of stuff that they, you know, but those kind, but they would not be assigned outdoor cases unless there was some nexus to the school. So we knew they fought on, at the park in the morning and then they spill into the school, they might grab that event and follow that through.
Okay. Um my other question is around the questioning of the students. And I know that's a a bit concerned. Um so there's a new law um that I know you're familiar with because you mentioned it, somebody mentioned it last time-
Right.
Um that was signed by the governor, some new legislation, and it's designed around the questioning of a a minor eighteen or, I think it's eighteen or under, or maybe it's under eighteen, um in connection with a crime. So if if you're believing or if they're going to be charged with some sort of crime, um I believe that the parent has to be there and give permission and that you know, you have to-
Yeah, that's on page seven.
Okay. And so that that is the new law.
Yes.
And that's what will be following.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure that I didn't misunderstand that.
Well, and and just to address one of the earlier concerns um from the Minister Alliance regarding, and I thought I heard that perhaps there was even some, uh when it came to the counseling and that whether or not it was mandatory and we're we're, we we don't do mandatory counseling or anything like that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that that was clear. Um and so yes, I do, uh I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
So yes, that that, the information you're looking for, Tori, is on page seven. It talks specifically about um the building principal's role in those interviews or designate if the principal's not available, what we need to have in writing, um and how we're going to conduct those interviews.
Okay.
I appreciate having this agreement ahead of time.
So it gave me a chance to go through. I I am interested in Exhibit A because I've I've got questions about-
Okay, yep, let's talk about that.
Other, other board member questions on the agreement? Other than the finances? Okay. Let's move on.
So in front of you, you have um Exhibit A. This is is a little more information than what we provided you, you know, and initially we had talked about, uh we kind of grouped those costs, right? The salary and the benefits, some uh very specific things, uniforms, equipment. Um this kind of outlines how we'll make the payments. In the agreement, we talk about that quarterly payment that we're going to make and that this, that's shown um and reflected here. Um this goes into more details about what some of the equipment is, um and and I'll let the chief explain the equipment and and they're not using gas masks and things like that with our students, but because they are um, you know, they are UPD officers, they, their union requires them to have certain equipment, um it is as part of the function of their role as a Urbana Police Officer solid.
So yeah, real quick, um as I said bef- so the idea, as you already know, Michelle Robinson is already in the middle school and this, in the pilot program functioning in in this role. And the idea would be to um have one in the high school effective uh January-ish. Um those, the the, we're not going to run out onto the street and hire somebody and hopefully get them all trained in time for January first. We will actually pull them from our current patrol um allotment, um much to their, uh, but we're going to pull those, but that's where those bodies come from and then we hire back to fill, fill those slots in. So they do need to have all the necessary uh equipment and whether that's um, and I think most of it's on there, the, the, this isn't all of it, but this is a a good chunk of it, especially the things that are, that we have to, and and what the the finance director has done is sort of annualized those costs out over time. And I think that's what you see in the, I guess toward the bottom of the uh, the uh, the listing there, maybe starting at about eight.
So um just to explain the vehicle, so the city is going to um purchase the vehicle and we've had a lot of discussions about, you know, what the vehicle would be and what, you know, how the vehicle would be used. But again, because they will uh function as an Urbana Police Officer, um they are, they need to have a uh vehicle and they're not allowed to um drive like their personal cars, you know, we, Caroline jokingly said, can't they like uh, you know, drive their personal cars? No. Can they like carpool from the station over to the schools? Is it right next to each other? No.
And and what's happened already?
Yes.
You, you, so yes, th- they need to be able to, I need to go, the, if that officer needs to go to the youth, the, the, the White Youth Detention Center-
Youth detention center or-
If they need to go to the-
To Yak.
To one of the, the Yak and those, in those types of places. Or if something just happens in a way they go, they can actually-
Yes.
-jump in and I, and I know that. I I will say that um the city is very interested in making sure we get this, get this rolling. Um and so as such, these one-time costs for the cars and then the other annualized bits of equipment have all been, the city will, I guess that i- if you look in the column, the column there, FY twenty, one-time cost for the city, the city is putting that out in an, in an attempt to make sure that the, this goes. So that's, that's where those, that number comes from there. Those are the the costs that the city's going to start with, um so that um we can get, get this rolling and make sure that they're equipped, so that they have the ability to have the computer in the cars. And and so like a car just sounds, well, it's a car, but there's a laptop in it and there's a s- a camera system in it. And then the officer, of course, has to have a body camera that syncs to the camera system. And so that's where a lot of these costs sort of, all of a sudden, you're like, well, wait a minute, you know, there's, there's, it's, it can get rather complex in those costs. Having done, we just changed over the fleet a year ago, so we had a fairly good idea uh about what those costs were.
Okay.
Questions, yes? Yeah, so can, is, are we looking at, it says FY twenty recurring cost to the school district is three hundred and twenty-one thousand and some change. So that's, is that what the recurring cost is for our two and a half, each year of the two and a half year commitment that we'd be obligating ourselves to?
Yes.
The three hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred is the cost to the district each year?
Correct. And so what they'd kind of done i- at the very bottom, I'm just patting across the bottom, you'll see that the, there's the quarterly bill. And so when they, as I divvy this out, so essentially when the, and and that includes so things like annualized amounts, so that when in seven, the life of a squad car typically is three to four years, for this, we figured it's going to last doubly, at least that twice as long because it's not, and so um it's like a seven year. So that, one seventh of that car then is set aside and annualized into that amount.
So why the difference between the middle school and the high school in the terms of the number of quarters?
So for FY twenty, this, that's fun across the bottom, that's for this current-
Oh, for this year.
That's for the current year, do you want to?
So um again, the middle school is is more months because we started, uh we kind of started piloting this in September when when Officer Robinson came on board, um and the city has been carrying those costs. Um so you know, those costs would shift to us once this agreement is, is um signed and approved. So is that what you're asking, Don?
Well, it's, it's uh three quarters for the three quarters. For the middle school, two quarters for the high school.
So that's just for this year, yes, not every year?
Correct. I guess that's, I guess the, the first quarter is being retroactively built for the one, she started September first-ish.
Yes.
Different than when Darren started?
Yes.
Well, yes, we're not charging for Darren's. So Darren has still been in the, I guess, the three-quarter time position this fall. Um so Darren has been, we're, we're not billing for Darren's time.
I see. Gotcha.
So we still have him, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday model, um he does have, you know, investigative duties that-
Other, other, right.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
With the salary and and benefits, um you guys have some, some really good benefits and I know they're not spelled out here, but I, I want to make sure that people listening understand that these officers are not taking home a hundred and thirty thousand in-
Yes.
-in their actual pay, that there's a big chunk of this that is-
Pension and retirement.
And and I'm pretty envious of the, the pension you guys have as officers. I've never seen anything like it before.
So yes, thank you. Um yes, that is correct. That is not, and I am, yeah, that, that is way more than just what they bring home. So that's a variety of subta- sub amounts in there, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we-
Thank you.
Are spelling that out.
Yes.
Anything else, board members?
In the way of questions or com- discussion? I mean, are you still just taking-
Discussion.
Discussing, question?
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I, I'll let people ask questions if there are any other questions to be asked. Otherwise, I, I certainly have a, a comment to make. Um, no more?
Go.
Okay. Um I just, I want to restate that I continue to oppose hiring two full-time SROs. Um since our last public discussion, which was October first, about increasing SROs into the district, I had in-depth discussion with a small group of teachers, parents and students at the high school. And I focused on the high school because we didn't have the vo- voices of the high school present at our discussion on October first. All those I talked to at the high school had very strong feelings about adding SROs. All also indicated that the climate and environment at the high school is a hundred percent better this year. And when I asked each of them, the parents, the students and the teachers, why that was so, why the climate was so much better, they said the following. Um relationships and communication are greatly improved, there are systems in place that are being followed, students and staff know about consequences for misbehavior and there's genuine follow-up. Uh teachers and administrators, administrators are more hands-on this year. And then one person said the adults are back in charge. No one mentioned SROs. And so I reminded each of them that we increased the SRO presence at the high school since last February's fight. And I asked how doing so contributed to the improved climate and calm at the high school, um didn't in fact that help? And each of them said without hesitation, absolutely not. And they restated their comments about why things were better at the high school, the things I mentioned earlier. I also asked the hi- the, the teachers, the students and the parents I talked to for reactions about our um SRO uniform discussion that we had on um October first. And most had equally strong feelings about the open display of guns on our SROs. They acknowledged that our SRO did not openly display a gun for most of the last twenty-six years in the district, uh before the February two thousand and nineteen fight, that is. All the students and teachers said that they knew who our SRO was without having a gun visibly displayed. SROs wear name badges and other identifying material. Many felt that visibly armed officers negatively affect the school culture and climate. Many said that the open display of a gun sends the message that those with guns wield the power, which is an attitude that we're, we're trying to combat in our community. The input that I heard from these, albeit small group, but long discussions with the Urbana High School teachers, parents and students has solidified my position, which is increasing the SROs fourfold in our district is a radical departure from our decades-long approach to armed police officers in our schools and is an overreaction to the events of last year, a year that was an anomaly for reasons I discussed last time. The three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar annual expense our district would incur locking us into a two and a half year commitment um in hiring these SROs is better spent on teachers, counselors and social workers, professionals who know our students best and are equipped to prevent serious conflicts from escalating. Instead of worrying about meeting the desired ratio of SROs to students that's recommended by the National Association of SROs, I believe that we should focus on the fact that we aren't meeting the desired ratio of social workers to students recommended by the National Association of Social Workers, which I understand is one social worker to two hundred and fifty students, nor that we're meeting the optimal class sizes in many of our regular classes at UHS. I can certainly support doubling our SRO presence so we employ one full-time SRO to be shared between UHS and UMS. We can always scale up the use of SROs if that's warranted in the future. Doubling, not quadrupling, the presence of armed officers in our schools is a reasonable step at this time. I also support continuing the past practice of asking our SROs to not visibly to, to display their firearm when in our schools.
Can I comment?
Um I'm not sure exactly where the past practice of no gun display has, has come about. That is not accurate. Um the officers would traditionally wear a pair of uh Ducker-type pants, slacks with perhaps a polo shirt and would have a gun and a badge that would have been displayed for, I guess I wouldn't say all of the time, but traditionally that would have been their um s- school attire. So is that, is that correct? Okay.
Well, the way it was explained to me and I, you know, I certainly wasn't in the high school all those times, is that they would have a polo shirt, but most of the time, according to these three teachers and the students I talked to, and of course, they had limited, well, the teachers all had been there for more than ten years, that most of the time the polo shirt was over the gun. I mean, that they knew the gun was there, but it wasn't visibly displayed. It was under a shirt.
Sure, and I, I'm not going to say that's never happened, but traditionally, at least, and I supervised the unit for nine years, so that traditionally would be a, it wouldn't have been glossed over, they would have clearly been identified in that way. So just-
I was going to make a comment, but I can, we can take more. Do you want me to kind of comment about more?
Well, let's let other board members and then come back.
Mine's rather lengthy. Does anybody else have something?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I've spent a great deal of time um on this particular subject. And um just as Peggy, I actually took from Peggy that I'm going to write, I'm going to write my opinion, so I'm not missing anything. So I believe, you know, during these middle years and even some of the early years, children are experiencing rapid biological, social, moral and emotional challenges that definitely sometimes lead to poor decisions. This poor decision-making leaves fear that young adolescents might be criminalized or face consequences like suspensions, expulsions, instead of other things being put in place first, especially for students of color. And I, and I definitely hear that and and I understand, you know, what's being said. I've heard several opinions um on what we do for our district lately. Um and you know, I'm definitely interested in kind of furthering our discussion tonight and weighing in, and we've already had some of that weigh-in. And Peggy, I respect, you know, the, the people you've talked to. I know, you know, your numbers were small, about five to ten people. Um and I respect those opinions fully, but I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the things that I've done and, and what I've heard and what I've found. You know, I do want to first challenge people that have an opinion to actually step foot into the middle school and the high school. If you're not there, I'm not going to say you don't have an opinion, um but I think that you need to visit these schools and talk to people and really see what's happening. Um I've heard a lot of opinions lately that come from people who don't come to the school outside of some special event and do, who do not- and do, who do not have any children in the school. Again, I'm not gonna say your opinion doesn't count, but, um, I definitely think that sometimes being in that presence and really seeing what's happening at the school makes a difference. Um, I'm in the schools a lot. Um, you know, I know Ms. Trisice is here, and I, I totally respect what you have said in your opinion. And, and I think I've had a discussion with you, um, one of the days I was there, I've had a discussion with a lot of people. Um, and, um, you know, as I visit and have these conversations and I'm in the school, I'm there at least twice a week, especially, um, definitely at the high school at least twice a week. Um, a- and this is not meetings. I'm not going to the school for meetings. I'm going to the school to actually have conversations and get to know staff and, and get to know students and hear from them. And I think you were at one of the tables that I talked to. So, you know, I'm seeing and I'm having conversations. And, you know, based on the discussions, um, and, you know, countless observations, you know, I've found that our SROs aren't in place for everyday discipline. And I think that's a huge misconception that a lot of people have that aren't there and don't see these people working. Um, they're not there so that every time a student is fighting, they're arresting them, you know? That everyday discipline is handled by the people who've always handled it. You know, we have people in place to handle those positions. And in fact, we've heard tonight, which I already knew because I contacted, had some questions before this, that we've put approximately one point two million dollars of new licensed professionals into our schools in the last two years. These are people that come with mental health backgrounds. They're trained, they're professional, and, and they're working in our schools. And I don't discount, again, Alicia, I didn't know, kinda all that you said. I, we didn't have that full conversation. You just kinda gave me your opinion. Um, I don't discount that we do need to do more at the elementary level. I said that before I, I even became a board member in April, that we've gotta reach these kids early. But at the same time, we also have to kinda catch some things right now for our older kids before we send them out in society. It, that's important, too. Um, and we've spent a lot of money on that. And, and I'm not at all, um, discounting the board making that decision. Um, I'm not at all discounting that, um, the dollars are not being appropriately spent by, um, having these people come in. I wanna make that clear, you know, cause I know sometimes a person's perception, when they're listening to you talk, think that, oh, this, this one point two million is a waste. It's simply to say, we definitely are trying, and we're definitely putting that money there. And we definitely will continue to have conversations and talk about that elementary level and figure out if, at this high school level and middle school level, um, if we need the numbers and the, the certain people and whether people need to be shuffled around. I mean, I think board members are supportive of the mental health, the social, emotional pieces. Um, in going to the schools, I can agree with, um, John to an extent that, um, the acronyms are very confusing. However, because I'm there often, I can look at a face, and I know these people, and I know what they do. So I might not know that you're, your name, you're an SEA, but I know what your job is based on the history of having those conversations. So it is a little confusing, and we probably could go with some different names and be consistent. But the important piece is to know who's doing what, and also for them to know what they're doing, what they should be doing, and so forth. And I think those are pieces that we're working to get better at. Another piece I did is I looked at studies. And the reason I looked at studies is because studies came up in, in individuals who had an opinion. Um, when I looked at some of the studies, actually, um, I looked at one that had gone on for quite a bit of time, but it was kind of an older one that ended in oh-eight. One of the things I found, um, is that enforcement officers that are carefully selected and trained for placement in schools, their presence can reduce crime and improve students' feelings of safety and other learning outcomes. That's based on a, uh, study that was released in two thousand and twelve by Kennedy, James, and Nice, for those who like, um, to go back and research. I don't wanna downplay that there are some kids who are afraid of police. There are some kids who are afraid of police. I mean, it's just a reality. I better than probably anyone on this board at least, understand the conversations that we as African-Americans have in our household and how some of those conversations are very different. Um, you know, I live in a neighborhood where, you know, it's predominantly minority and quite a few poor people. And, you know, one of, you know, I've kinda battled this because what I think we have is a chance to change some of this narrative. And we could easily miss out on it because of thinking of other things. You know, we can stop kids from having that anxious feeling around police officers that they encounter. Some districts have their SROs do nothing but law enforcement and order maintenance, while others have theirs teaching, helping deliver programs, building relationships. Based on my interactions at both the middle school and the high school, especially at the middle school, um, I see a lot of the relationship building happening. I don't see that SRO there, a- and, and really with neither of them. They're not the, they don't have the lock them up mentality that some people think of when they think, oh, there's a police officer in the school. In fact, in my discussions with administrators, they've actually said that these officers are compassionate, that they don't arrest students for situations where if they were outside of the school, they would've easily been arrested. So they're doing the same thing in the school as they might be doing in the community, only in the school, they're not being arrested. Whereas in the community, hey, that would have qualified you to go to YDC today. That says a lot about an officer when they're saying, you know, this is, this is a, a petty misdemeanor. Let's figure out a way to refer this kid off to get some counseling. Let's have some additional conversations. Let's take this kid who's maybe not getting counseling, that they're just getting the interventions, but not the counseling, to know what's going on. Let's send them for some more aggressive counseling. And that's what I'm seeing when I'm at the school. I'm seeing referrals being done. I'm hearing a principal saying, I've had parents come in and request that Michelle be in a meeting with us. That says a lot to me personally. Um, so I don't see our police officers as being that aggressor, that, the ones that we're dealing with anyway, our SROs, as being that aggressor that's, you know, quick to arrest. You know, so, so from there, um, I wanted to actually have some conversations. And so I spent a full day plus just on this topic at the high school. I spent portion of the day at the middle school. And I'm gonna talk, just like Peggy did, I'm gonna talk more about the high school, um, because I saw about two hundred, uh, just under two hundred people that I talked to in about seven hours, um, that I spent there. And I purposely talked to as many groups as I could. So I talked to almost every administrator that day. We're talking principals, assistant principals. Um, I talked to almost all of the, what would be our former dean. And again, I don't, um, know that acronym, but I can name all of them, and I was able to talk to them. I talked to students, you know, I spent, um, I ate lunch in the lunchroom. I walked around to different tables. I purposely talked to different groups of students. So you had some students that I know are in classes with my kids. So they're kind of our AP track kids, I call them. I talked to, to kids that, you know, I know are in some regular courses. I talked to black kids. I talked to white kids. I talked to Hispanic. I really made a, an effort to meet each group. Even when it came to their, um, their sex and how they identify themselves. I, I purposely talked to a large group. And I'm gonna tell you what I found, because I think it's that important. And I know I'm talking a lot, but this is just that important. It's a hot topic. Um, so, a- and again, you know, Peggy, I respect the ten or so people that you talked to. Uh, and I may have talked to some of them in, in the conversations that I had. I had a, a pretty good mix. And so, um, during my conversations, and let me get to that, cause I'm gonna skip some of this. During my conversations at the middle school, again, I, um.
Middle school or high school?
I'm sorry, at the high school. So I was at the middle school, too, but I spent more time at the high school. And I'm gonna talk about the high school, because the middle schools, several of them have already been here, and they've already spoke. Um, and so, um, there was a little bit of varying opinions from the administrators. Um, and, um, from the administrators, I actually didn't have anyone on the administrative team that did not say yes. Um, that's from principal, that's several of the assistant principals. They were very much in support of one full-time SRO at the high school. Very strong opinions. Um, I let them share their own opinions, since that's such a small group. Of the teachers and staff, almost seventy percent of those I talked to said yes, that they would like one full-time, um, officer. About thirty percent, um, were between, I don't have any dealings with the SRO, to things are better this year, and so either it's working or we're just doing better. That was kind of, um, a, a big group as well. And then I had, um, under one percent that basically said no, um, you know, a SRO period is not needed. In over a hundred students I spoke to, there was a split between yes for about sixty percent, about thirty-five percent actually said, I didn't know we had an SRO, and/or I don't have an opinion. Um, almost five percent think, think things are going great this year, so maybe he isn't needed. And less than one percent who I talked to said no. I actually had a student that came back and found me later in the day, you know, I was kinda roaming the hallways. And he was the, one of the no's. And he actually said, um, I want you to know that I'm saying no because I don't want the presence of anyone with a gun in the school. And I, I respect that. You know, I wanna hear all the opinions. I had some interesting conversations with students. I talked to a group of students that said, you know, we'd like to know who the SRO is. He should introduce himself to us and get to know us. You know, one student said, you know, a friend talked about bringing a gun to school but decided not to because he knew he'd be arrested. I mean, that really stood out to me that day, that, you know, you have a kid that's saying, you know, I'm beefing with somebody and I would be bringing a gun to school, but I might get arrested. That's, i- it's disappointing, but it's a reality of where we are today. Um, one teacher said the school environment has taken a one-eighty and things are better this year because we have, um, more people in place to prevent and respond. So again, not necessarily that the SRO, like, that may have been one of the ones that Peggy talked to, that not necessarily the SRO, but that there are a lot more people, um, that are in place. And then I had one student that said, why would you not? He said, is it money? Because if it's money, I can tell you a bunch of other places where the district is wasting money and could save. But safety should not be an area that we skimp in. Um, so, you know, for me, um, you know, I've looked at the surrounding community, and we didn't really talk a lot about that. Um, but when we look at Saint Joe, Unity, Tolu, Ogden Prairie View, Rantool, Champaign, every last one of them has a full-time person at not only their high school, but their middle school. I mean, we're talking, some of these cities don't even have nearly the issues and the crime and the disruptions to their school day that we do. And they all have one full-time SRO, middle school and high school level. And that's not to say that we have to follow what other people are doing. But it certainly tells us that this presence is not something that's odd, that it's not something that's foreign to, you know, our state and our, our region. Um, I could go on and on, but I'm not. Um, you know, I know that the financial piece has come up. I'm, I'm glad that we're able to, you know, break down some of this. And the reality is, we're gonna have to pay a chunk of this money anyway. You know, we already have a part-time person that's there, so we're not really talking, um, approving the, I mean, we are talking approving this full amount, but some of this money we'd be approving anyway, so it's not quite as much as it's saying. And that's certainly, again, not to downplay that it's not a lot of money. It, it's a lot of money. It's, it's an expense that we certainly aren't, weren't expecting, um, to have to pay. Um, we're not voting on this topic tonight. And, you know, I'm certainly have taken all that between the research. Um, and I didn't really go into some of the flaws of the research, but I will mention that, you know, quite a few of the research, um, information that's out have some flaws in that they're taking a school district that, so these SROs are typically at schools that already have discipline issues, that already have, I wouldn't, problems, so to speak, within the schools. And a lot of times, they're comparing them to a school that because they don't have the discipline issues or the issues in their community, they don't have an SRO. So it's kinda like comparing apples to oranges. If you have issues in a community, then of course, you're gonna have a disproportionate, uh, amount of kids that are being arrested, suspended, and expelled from a school that doesn't have issues and doesn't have an SRO. So some of the studies, I mean, you really have to be diligent in understanding what they actually did in the study. And does that make sense? And does that even apply to our community and what we have going on here? So, again, we're not voting tonight. Um, I certainly, based on the majority of those that I talked to right now, I am in support of a full-time at the high school and a full-time at the middle school for several reasons. And my reasons aren't just centered around trying to prevent Columbine. I mean, we have other opportunities here to have our students in a situation where it's not a confrontational situation. It's not threatening. They're actually getting to know a police officer and being able to see the human in that police officer and understand that because things are going on in social media, because a girl got body slammed at some school in Texas, or a seven-year-old got cuffs put on him in Kansas, that that is a few instances. It's, it's definitely not the majority. Um, the majority of these individuals are good people, and they're not here just to arrest us. Um, so being able to see them in that light is also helping them future-wise. I mean, if we're, we're educating these kids, why aren't we educating them on that police aspect? So that when they're leaving high school, they're not in a situation where maybe they're stopped by a police officer and they decide to open the door and get out and run. They'll know, because we have a teaching aspect that we've asked that would be added to some kinda learning for these police officers, where it's more than just, I'm here to deal with troubled kids. It's how can we prevent the guns, the drugs, the bad interactions that lead to bad situations for kids? So, those are my points. I know I was long, but, um, I've spent enough time on it that I thought it was important to talk about.
Thanks, Tori. Any, any other board member? Mine's not in writing. And maybe it's repetitive what I've already said, but, um, I sh- I started in my thinking of, um, indicating that, you know, if you have high expectations, um, I'm impressed that all of our Urbana High School students measure up to those high expectations. Uh, if you have low expectations, they, they, they settle for, for lower levels. But, um, and so that caused me to have some cons- for all the time I've been on here, I've been a little bit resistance, resistant to, um, and people would consider that Peggy might be one of the more liberal people on the board, and I might be one of the more conservative, and how could we agree? But, um, I agree that, um, uh, I don't, I don't wanna see- But I agree that, I don't wanna see our, our schools turned into security-hardened facilities with people or with the architecture. But what I've come to think about is the impact. I, I do believe, unlike maybe some of the people that you talked to, I, I do believe the presence of the police in the last year and a half have had, have had a positive effect. I hear from people over the years, not in the last two or three years, but over the years, that have been able to become, on a first-name basis, Matt Rivers comes to my mind. And, and how, Matt was not an SRO by job, but he coached, and had a heck of an impact on a lot of kids that, oh, that's, it wasn't Officer Rivers, it was, oh, that's Matt. And, and they saw him out in the community and responded to him as a person, not as a, as a walking billboard with a uniform and a big fat gun on. And so I understand the relationship building. What is gonna be my final, and very telling point, because people that know me do know that I'm, three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. But people that talk to me indicated that spending that three hundred thousand might save us from having to spend five hundred thousand or a million dollars to do things like metal detectors, or other kinds of things that other schools are doing in the name of security. And I think in the name of security, if we can, I'm circling back to the expectations. If we have the relationship and the expectations begin to change by having the officer there and becoming a known quantity, that that will lessen the need for us to have to have metal detectors, lessen the need for us to have, put another set of doors in front of every set of doors that we've got, so that you don't hit the button and go through one door, but you hit the button and go through two doors, you hit the button twice. That, having to hit a button before you walk in a school building is already disturbing to me, that that's necessary and required these days. But I understand it's necessary and required. But I sure don't wanna have, our local architect doesn't talk this way, but any kind of outside architect we bring in is gonna say, well, you need another set of doors, and you need to, you need to move the offices, because you have to have the offices right by the door, because the offices have to have maintained. Yeah, all these architectural things, it could be way, way, way more expensive. And so that's gonna be the telling point. And, and that was the point that caused me to move from the one, because I thought, I was thinking like you, Peggy, absolutely, let's just step it up a little bit at a time and see what happens. But I'm, I'm now ready to support the two. And, and I just needed a lot of dominos to happen to push me there. And the last one was this architectural stuff.
My biggest concern with going to one over two is I'm, I'm afraid that the middle school is gonna get short shifted. I think that the high school is just gonna take all the attention from the one officer, and middle school, I think, needs one as well.
That's a good point, because we've got history to look at, and that's exactly what's happened in the history. Is, the halftime officer was supposed to be split evenly between the two buildings. And, and if we did a time study, I'm sure we'd find out that seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five, ninety percent of the time, they were at the high school.
And the high school administrators, I don't remember which one, Dr. Berenson's back there, but one of them said to me that that has happened. Like, if they, you know, called, you know, or vice versa. But before we had Michelle, when they would call over for the high school person, they would go over to the middle school and not come back. Because they'd be over there and deal with this thing, and then deal with this thing, and then deal with this thing. And I think that could happen both ways. I was gonna make a comment earlier. I'm glad we let Tori go first, because her results were much more adept than what I was going to share around students that I talked to. So I know last time John did wanna have a little more high school voice. So thank you, Tori, for your, your diligence to that. But I had talked to Dr. Berenson, who's in the back, about kind of getting some student voice in some of his groups of, of interactions with students. And then I talked to a few students too. And I think, you know, Dr. Berenson shared with me that you're right, Tori, and Peggy, basically. There are, there is a group of students at our high school who don't even know that we have an SRO. And, and I think partially, based on the ones that I talked to, they, they live in a very different, hmm, how can I say this? I don't wanna say bubble, but in a very different world than some of our other students exist in. And so I think for some of our students, you know, Tori mentioned that AP track, and, you know, I think when I step into some of my kids' classes, you know, last year, my, I have a sophomore. My son did not have, he was not very happy last year at Urbana High School, because there was not one student of color in several of his classes. He was the only African-American boy in most all of his core classes. He didn't get to see a friend until lunchtime. That was just his world. And so when you talk to the kids that he is in classes with, many of them probably don't know that we have an SRO. He does, but they don't. Because in his world, he knows about, you know, kids that are getting shot at at night. And some of, you know, one of his very good friends is, is the young man who was in a wheelchair, who's paralyzed, because he was shot, you know, a couple of years ago in his neighborhood. So I think, I think there are different realities to, you know, the, the real lives that our students at Urbana High School, they walk very different paths. I think some of our students are thankful that the SROs are there. I can tell you, as a parent, last year, both of my boys came home and told me that there are guns at Urbana High School, and they knew it. I had a parent who told me after this last shooting, what was that, two months ago or early in the year? As we were interviewing, I came over to the high school, and I interviewed some parents. And I was helping the SRO, and I talked to some kids. And she said, you know, Ms. Tatum, there are guns at this school, and I know it. And she was saying, I'm telling you, and I said, I know it. And, and that is one of the reasons why I feel like I will sleep a whole lot better at night, knowing that, I agree, Tori, we're not, you know, doing this to prevent Columbine. We're doing this to prevent that kid who walked around all last year at our high school carrying a gun every single day. And he did, because he said it was, I wasn't gonna use it, but I have it for protection. But what if something happened in the lunchroom, right? And now, I'm not, it's not just on me for protection. I'm protecting myself and I'm pulling it out, because I feel threatened. So I'm with you, John. I don't wanna have to start winding kids. You know, I, you know, I think the metal detectors, yeah, we may not ever get there. But there are a lot of districts that are using those winds. And you walk in, and, you know, do we wanna have to start seeing, you know, we already have some kids that we have to search after this blast incident in our community. We search them when they come to school in the morning. We search them when they go out for open lunch and come back, because we don't know what they're bringing back when they come back in at lunchtime. That is the reality of the world that we live in, unfortunately. And I think having the presence of an SRO is not gonna stop that. But I think a lot of our students might think twice about some of the decisions and choices that they will make around things like gun violence moving forward. So, that's just my two cents. I know I didn't give really good data, but I do think we have, you know, some, and Mitch could come up and give more specific data. But I think they're very different lenses than our students exist in. And the bubbles are very different in terms of, you know, what certain populations, our student groups, how they view whether there's an SRO or not. Because, you know, in the classes they live in, nobody's fighting. Nobody's fighting at AP Calculus. You know, nobody's, you know, having a knock-down, drag-out in Spanish eight, because the kids in that class are just, that's just not their world. But in other classes where, you know, you, you're, the potential to have an argument exists every day in, in some of those classroom settings. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
So maybe as recently as five years ago, when we would have talked about this, and, and not, when we would have talked about safety, not SRO, but when we talked about safety. What was drilled into our heads as board members by administrators was that Urbana was looked at by those kids who were having that different lens than my children would have had, is that Urbana High School was a safe zone. It was Switzerland. It was the neutral ground, where everybody knew it was neutral, and so nobody messed. And people could come in and talk to each other in the school day, and then go back to their neighborhood and be mortal enemies. But they thought that Urbana was a safe zone. I wanna get back to that. And if this is a route to, to get there, you're right, we'll never fix, we cannot fix every social problem in Urbana. No school, district can do that in the community they live in. But if we can become a safe zone, a neutral zone, call it whatever you want, where kids can come in, hopefully leave the guns at home, because they don't need them for protection in our schools. And if the SRO can help create the environment that makes that happen, then that's a noble cause.
I think to your point of the, the kids that are kinda walking a different road, my son's one of them too. You know, I think we also have community members that are in that same space that don't even realize the amount of youth violence. I mean, they hear sometimes about the big stories, but I don't think they have a clue, you know, just how much really is happening in our communities. And I feel like if we could just reach some of those kids before they get to that point, of even doing it in the community. I mean, obviously, the school is my biggest concern. But if we could reach some of them on the front end and prevent that violence, and change that mindset, and have that confidence, and have that high expectation, then some of those kids might start taking that other road that they didn't even know existed. And, and I'm not saying the SRO's gonna do that by himself or by herself. You know, I think all of those other pieces that we've put in place, along with our great teachers, you know, our administration, are, they're all pieces of this puzzle that I think when working together and, and, and doing what's right by our children, can, we can see some of that success. And that's hard to measure, because there's not a way to say, how effective was this SRO, when you don't know what could have been coming? You know, yeah, you can say, well, suspensions are down, and expulsions are down, and we've had less fights, and people are happier. But you can't really measure what you didn't know was gonna happen. That gun that was gonna be brought to school that wasn't. That shooting that was gonna happen in the community, but a circle at school squashed a lot of that. You just, you can't measure those things, so.
I just wanted to build on what everybody else has said, that it kinda crystallized for me just tonight. I would like to view an addition of SROs as a, a part of the education piece. It's not a discipline piece necessar, I mean, it can be, but not necessarily. It's part of education, if we wanna stop people being afraid of police. Because it's not just minority populations who are terrified of cops. I grew up terrified of cops when I was a kid. I mean, and I was, you know, I got good grades and everything, but I was terrified of, of what they would say to me and how I would behave around them. And I, I didn't see them as people. And they are people, and I want our kids to see them as people, and I want them, they, they have unique perspectives that nobody else in our school has. So to say that they're taking the place of a trained professional or a clinician or something, I don't think is accurate, because a police officer has knowledge of the law, knowledge of the repercussions of what happens when you break the law, what hap, and probably longevity of people who have had problems in high school and go on to have further problems. They can help stop that, they can educate our kids. I mean, they can talk about social media, they can talk about dating violence, they can talk about, and, and it's in our agreement right here that they can be available for educational opportunities. I want us to take those up if we do sign onto this agreement. I want them to be proactive with our kids, so our kids aren't afraid of cops. They know that cops are citizens of, or, you know, officers of the peace first and foremost, to help us figure out our problems when they're too big for kids to try and solve. But also, you were saying earlier, or somebody was saying one of our officers is out Monday. Mondays are the days when a lot of stuff comes back to school that happened over the weekend. And those officers are that connection. And we heard that from Dr. Bivins, not Dr. Bivins anymore, she's changed her name. She said that several meetings ago, of how she really appreciated that, that puzzle piece from Officer Michelle, because she would have insights that some of our professionals at the schools don't have. So I would like to change the way it's described, as from being a disciplinary safety officer to being also an educational officer. And when I can wrap my head around that, I hope other people can see it that way, as a preventative thing to stop the school, the prison pipeline, because they're trying to help educate our kids in areas that we don't have experience in. So that's a positive for me.
I think about, on the flip side also, what about the students who are afraid to go to school? And they might have a peace of mind, knowing that there is a full-time SRO officer there. Because the people who, like, you talked about earlier, who are not quite aware of different things that happen in the community and everything, when an incident happens, sometimes they might not know what to do. And so, you know, it could give them a peace of mind that there is a SRO officer there. And the SRO officer could also educate them as to what's really going on, and how to act in different situations that might come up in their lives, so.
Peggy, you look like you wanna say something more.
Sorry, everybody on tape, we're having trouble with the microphones tonight, we're not sure why.
Yeah, we have a bad batch of batteries, I guess, but, I mean, it seems to me just a short kind of summary. To me, the question is not whether there's value in our SROs. Clearly, they provide great value and benefit, and have for twenty-six years. The question is, what's a reasonable increase based on our history? And up till last year's mayhem, which everybody agrees was an aberration, for twenty-six years, a halftime SRO has served us well. And you're right, Urbana has been a safe zone. Community violence, which didn't start last year. I mean, the teachers I talked to reminded me of the thing, the heavy-duty things that happened in Champaign-Urbana fifteen, ten, five years ago. The difference was, it didn't spill over into our schools, because we invested in relationships and trained professionals and systems that worked. None of those things were in place last year, largely the systems that didn't work. To me, three hundred and twenty thousand each year for two and a half years is better spent. Some of that is better spent in, in investing in our trained professionals whose job it is to help kids know how to diffuse conflict. The SROs, I mean, as they say, their primary job is as law enforcement official. They are not, they may do some educational opportunities, but they are not trained counselors, they are not trained social workers. We have professionals who do that, and we need to invest more in that. My, my great fear is that people, this SRO presence creates this false sense of security. I mean, remind you that the Parkland, Florida shooting happened when there was an active SRO on duty. You know, our schools are safe places, and, and data, research shows that, actually, our kids are safer in their schools, almost, from gun violence, compared to anywhere else, including their home. So our, our kids are safe in our schools. I don't wanna create this sense of, you know, that schools are a dangerous place, that it is not the case. But it does create a false sense of security. But in fact, we know what makes kids safe is to have systems and relationships in place, people who know when kids are struggling and when they need other supports. That's not the SRO's job. They do wonderful things, but, but our, our lens shouldn't be shifting to looking at armed police officers to make our schools effective learning places. That's what it's been for the last twenty-six years. I think the, the question isn't, are SROs good for our community? The question is, what's a reasonable increase based on our history? And again, I think doubling, not quadrupling, is a reasonable step. We can always add up, we can always scale up. But why jump up fourfold because we had a horrendous year last year? And why create this sense that somehow if we quadruple our SRO- And why create this sense that somehow if we quadruple our SROs, that last year will never take place again? You know, to me, that's misguided.
Have you guys seen the community violence with our youth in this community as it has been in the last year?
So, they're still working, okay. I got a red light on here. I know. So, that question has come up with regards to some of our other efforts in the community outside of the school. So the Champaign County Community Coalition, we are looking and we have had some real discussions about that. And we had done some own, of our own work with regards to some of the stats and the crime data, and how you define gun violence seemed to be, was that a possession, is it, well, you know, how would we count this, and how would we do it without pulling every police report over the last five years? Melissa Hendry, our crime analyst, has looked at this and helped me kind of sort through some of this, and no matter what methodology we used to study the data, thirteen to seventeen year olds are clearly involved in more gun violence now than they had, and specifically even with nineteen, in 2019 than they had in the prior, in the prior years. So that is a problem. And while I have the mic, I wanted to just jump on something that you had said, Ms. Exum, with regards to the changing of the narrative. That is a huge thing for any police chief or any police administrator, is that, how do we go about changing the narrative? And I, I don't think I might have said this here, so pardon me if I said this before, but I was at a conference one time when I was a chief, talking about how do you change the narrative, how do, what do we do? And his answer to that question was, one, non-enforcement contact at a time, and it's very slow. Most people deal with the police at traffic stops and other sort of enforcement activities. But when it's the Sweet Corn Festival, and there are officers walking up and down there, talking to people as they're getting at the Briggs Beer Tent or getting another lemon shake-up, those kinds of non-enforcement interactions are so valuable. And there are times when, over the years, when I've done things like coached Little League or part district basketball, or been Boy Scouts, and every once in a while, I come to one of those events with a uniform on. You're the, Mr. Seraphin, you're the police? Uh, yeah. Oh. So there's a ton of value in that, and, and having watched over the SROs for a while in prior years, that idea of that we, you build those relationships and we've gotten people that have come to the SRO with information on some serious shooting or death investigation, and they knew I went to that person because I know SRO X, and they treated me well and they had a relationship with them. So that's, I don't think that's a surprise to anyone, but that is clearly something that I wanted to support you on.
I think we all have a lot to think about. I'm assuming this will be on our agenda in two weeks.
Yes.
As an action item.
Yes.
And so I encourage all board members to think very seriously about everything that's been said tonight, from the written presentations, all three, from our, all three written presentations to those that of us that have, are still working our way through this decision-making process. But I do encourage board members to be prepared in two weeks for action on this. We'll make sure it's not on a consent agenda, it will be a separate individual action item, because I'm sure there'll be further discussion.
And I'm always open to additional conversation, so I know there are people watching that maybe I haven't talked to that have an opinion. I'm always willing to listen to opinions, so I just want to put that out there.
I would prefer to get a lot of input from the community about something like this, as opposed to the volume of input that I've gotten about a resolution that's going to be passed in Chicago, or not passed in Chicago, and people are all exercised about. This is more important to our community than that resolution will ever be.
Well, and what you said, it's just a resolution. It's not.
That's my point exactly.
Yeah.
And we'll be sharing this information again with city council, so the chief and I will go and tag team there as well.
I think if one thing I've heard tonight that all seven of us, six of us that are here tonight could agree on, is that, and I think all seven could agree on, is that the educational component needs to be strong, needs to be strong. So, okay. With that, I think we're ready to move on, board members?
Thank you.
It is almost 10:30, oh my goodness. So, we do have, as I said, an exec session immediately following this, there'll be no action following that, it's just about some property-related issues. Superintendent, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, I do, if, I don't know what happened to the, did you turn it off, Lori?
Thanks. Thank you, Chief and Assistant Chief, thank you very much.
Okay, so very quick, it's not very, it's not a long one tonight, but I did just want to congratulate our Tiger, and did you guys notice the new setup? I don't know if you noticed the projector over there. So we, we will eventually have, for our audience, to be able to share, that screen's not down right now, but we will have a better way to be able to view some of our sessions. So Tiger marching band won best percussion and first place grand champions at the El Paso Gridley Titan Tussles. So congratulations again to our wonderful Tiger marching band. Girls.
Percussion, as flag, and as well as drum majors.
First, best percussion and grand champion overall, first place. So yes. Also, our both cross-country teams finished with great seasons. The girls' cross-country team missed qualifying as a group at state just by nine points. The boys ended their season short of having any individuals qualify, but we did want to congratulate on the left tier, Olivia Rosenstein and Celia Barbieri. Olivia and Celia will both represent Urbana at the state championship meet in Peoria this weekend. Olivia is a regional champ, and now, after last weekend, a sectional champ, and Celia placed eighth overall.
And she was the featured female athlete of the week in the Gazette?
Yes, so that's the next slide. Thank you, John. So, very fresh off the press, Olivia is, was our News Gazette athlete of the week this week. And Chase Mandra, who's kind of holding up that number one, was from soccer team, was an athlete of the week a couple of weeks ago. United Nations Day at King, this is always a great celebration. We didn't get to really highlight this, because this was the same day Derek Peterson was with us on our October 24th. I know Mr. Williams Cameron has several great photos, these are just a few. And then the Theory of Relativity, November 6th through 10th this week, the high school theater department is presenting this musical Wednesday through Saturday. Tickets are five dollars for students and staff with an ID, and I know, of course, you guys get in for five dollars as well. And at, at 7:00 PM and on Sunday at 2:30.
It's nice to know, you'll have to make that clear to people, I've been charged 10 bucks for years.
Well, I would say your staff, you get to get in for five dollars, I'd say.
If board members can be added to that list, that would be much appreciated.
Yes, I think you should come for five dollars. Yes, retroactive, for all the plays you've been to. That's it.
Thank you. Board reports.
We've got some good events coming up. Did you mention that the, the two were competing in Peoria?
Yes, yep, cross-country.
And then I know there's a band concert for the middle school on Thursday as well, and there's a fundraiser, I believe it's this Saturday, at the middle school.
Oh, I didn't know about that one.
At the middle school, is it for the DC trip? It's for the DC trip.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure that's Saturday, so look for those things.
Yes.
And try to support at least one or two things if you can. It's good to get out and help our kids.
And I've heard great things about the issue of the Habitat Club doing two trips a year now, and apparently the first trip they just got back from, and they had a great experience.
Yep, they go again in February, and I'm thinking about going. I'm thinking about it, I'm, I'm trying to wrap around a couple of concerts.
Got to swing a hammer.
I'm, I'm thinking about it, so.
All right, anything else from any board members? Motion to adjourn to executive session for purposes of discussing property would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, it's roll call vote, since we're going into closed session.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Vice President?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. President Devin?
Yes, there'll be no action following the exec session. Thanks, everybody, and good night.